Welcome to the December 15, 2020 Board of Commissioner meetings. Please silence your cell phone pagers and other electronic communication devices. Agendas are located at the back of the chambers. If you'd like to speak on any item today, please take a speaker request from the back of the bookcase there and hand them to Ms. Hawley at the left of our dais, please. First, we'll have a moment of silent for reflection from Commissioner Roskinick that pledges of allegiance, and Ron is going to say a prayer for us this morning.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy keen income, thy will be done, and purposed it is in heaven. Give us his day, our daily bread, forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those in trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us, dear Lord.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today, we did a recognition of our outgoing Commissioner, Commissioner Roskinick, or Roskinick, Commissioner DeSanto.
See you, Ron.
Thanks for joining us for a couple of years, Ron. You said a prayer so we can make you go. Just kidding. Commissioner DeSanto, we've all enjoyed working with Commissioners DeSanto. Great leadership, a great team player. We appreciate him very much these last four years. I think he's been an asset to our commission on many things that he has added to for Commissioners, does anybody have anything that they wish to say?
I'll second your comments.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I'll just repeat what I'd said in, when he stopped by this morning, is that I think Mark's integrity and his persistence in what he believed in, and I think he brought some great value to this commission and to the county. And I brought up some of the stuff that he'd worked on, and he's always been advocate for, do we need it, the taxpayer dollars? But he also, one of the biggest things he said is, you know, if he's wrong, he admitted. And there was a couple of times he'd done that, and that's very respectful of a person. And so, hate to see him go, but that was one of the things I value is friendship and getting to know him a little more through the four years we've served on the commission. Thanks, Mr. DeSanto.
Thank you. Commissioner LaCroy, this job is a commitment to serve people and be a servant, so I believe Commissioner DeSanto has done that. We appreciate everybody that takes this job. I don't know, as you know, if politicians are public servants, but when you're a public servant, you actually care, I believe, more about the people you serve. And you work as team with the players that you have, meaning our department heads and our employees here. Pennington County is a better place with this team of Commissioners and with Mark DeSanto being part of this team, and I think we've got a lot done with him and with our team the last four years, and that's with our department heads. And Ms. Hawley and Joan, and this team, and I don't know, we all know, when we have people that don't work as team, it makes it a lot harder for everybody in Pennington County. So, I've appreciated these last few years and just watching how much the department heads have grown, and Lloyd had said that as well, and how Commissioner DeSanto had grew from the beginning to the end. It's amazing to watch, even with our department heads, how much we get better every year and we get more knowledgeable about the things that we do here in Pennington County. And I think that's why we have a lot of success here. It takes that team effort, it takes those people running the show, basic Commissioners or department heads and employees, to make all of that come together. And I think the last few years, it's just been amazing. I've been in politics a long time, and it's been very joyful to me to just watch that. And so, this year, I'm just very joyful and thankful to everybody here in our Pennington County team that has made that happen. It's pretty amazing to watch. And again, if you've been in politics or if you've been a public servant, it's just amazing to see that transition and that what's happening throughout the county and the areas. We've got different department heads, and boy, they just seem to just fit right in. That was pretty amazing to watch, but Mark was a part of all this, and that should mean something to all of us, so you have to be a little sentimental. But I appreciate you all, and I appreciate Mark's service. We do have the new Commissioner here. If you'd like to introduce himself, it was his fault he came today. If you could come up, Travis, and introduce yourself. That way, everybody knows what you look like, so they can arrest you for the rest of the four years.
Nothing like getting put on the spot when you weren't expecting that.
I know.
So, some of y'all do know me, I'm Travis Lassiter. I've been serving on the Planning and Zoning Commission for almost four years now, and I live in New Underwood, or outside of New Underwood, and I have a small farm ranch for me and my family, and I've served 21 years in the Air Force as an EMT paramedic, and I'm just happy to continue to serve in our community. So, serving the county just seemed like the natural once I retired from the Air Force. So, it's a pleasure to be here, and thanks for all the support from those that are here in the Planning Office and the Commissioners' Office, who have helped me the last four years to learn about what I'm doing here and what I get myself ready to get into. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Travis, for coming up. Next, we have the recognition of emergency services.
Madam Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We didn't approve the agenda yet.
I apologize. Go ahead, Commissioner.
I'd make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Motion by Drews, second by LaCroy. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Speaking of recognition and how great we're doing here, Kevin, you're up.
Good morning. Kevin Carley, Director, Pennington County, 911. As I advised in the letter that I sent last week, I wanted to officially recognize my staff here at the commission meeting for what we think is a pretty major accomplishment. We achieved our seventh consecutive accreditation. We've been, our first one was in 2001, and we're accredited through the Emergency, or excuse me, the International Academy of Emergency Dispatchers. They establish criteria, training methods for standards for our dispatchers. So, when someone calls 911 with an emergency medical crisis, they talk to one of our EMD dispatchers. And we're very proud of the fact that we have the high standard that we do here. So, the highest level of accreditation is the A standard, which we've achieved all seven times, all seven times that we have gone through the process. And there's only two other agencies in the entire world that achieved more than seven. They've achieved eight, and there's only 23 agencies in the world that have achieved a seven of those, so we're very proud of that accomplishment, and I think it speaks to the high level of service that we give our citizens here in Pennington County. I'd like to introduce my accreditation team. We've got 33 EMD dispatchers. Obviously, we could bring all 33 of them in here. I'd love to recognize them, they do a great job, that's why we're able to accomplish what we did. But I would still like to introduce my team that helped us achieve that. So, first of all, we have Stephanie Olson. Stephanie is the Director, Deputy Director of Operations. She oversees the operations, and she supervises the team that puts that package together. Mary Shoemaker is our manager, she does our quality assurance. She's one that makes sure that we're meeting that standard every day by monitoring calls, giving feedback to dispatchers, and she's also one who put the package together for us to submit. And finally, we have Mari Brooks, she's our training supervisor. She works with Mary Shoemaker. When Mary sees any issue, what she believes is a training issue we need to correct, either with an individual dispatcher or as a center, they work together to put a training program together to make sure that we're maintaining that standard. So, the three of them played a big part in making sure that we're continuing to meet that standard.
If you'd like to stand, ladies. Hand board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Also on hand this morning is Colonel Rick Miller. He's the current Chairman of our User Board, and I thought I would introduce him.
Got that short guy in the back? Morning, sir.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Colonel Rick Miller with South Dakota Highway Patrol, thank you very much for having me here today, and I'm glad to be part of this group, and I say part, only that, as part of the Users Board, a member and a customer of the dispatch center, and they do great work, and this accreditation is just one of the many great things that they do. And so, thanks for the support that everyone gives to that dispatch center, and thanks for having me.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your service. Any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Roskinick.
You know, Kevin, you and the girls are back there where nobody sees you, you're out of sight, out of mind, but you know, I just want to say thank you, and I want to say thanks to Mary and the whole crew for doing what you do and doing such a good job that you're doing, and now you're going to go for number eight.
Yes, absolutely.
That's what I was going to say.
Well, you're the only one in the world that you can pull that one off.
Yeah, it's, you know, we tried to do Facebook postings with our staff, and it's dispatchers, they like to be, that's why they put in for that job, because they don't want to be in the limelight, and they don't want to be recognized, and they like being off by themselves. So, that's just a part of the personalities that they have doing that job. They're able to make a big contribution to their community and not have to be actually out in the community doing things, and so, they take a lot of pride in what they do.
Thank you, Kevin, and we appreciate them very much, because a lot of times, they have to work in the holidays, I mean, they have to work in the holidays. They don't have choices, a lot of people in our county, but I appreciate everything they do as well, and a lot of times, our board takes some treats all the time, and recognize that we do care about them. So, thank you, Board, for taking care of our 911 as well. So, when they have to work on those holidays, it's nice to get treats and other things to feel like it's Christmas, so great team you have, Kevin.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Thank you, thank you.
Next, Ms. Holly Hennies. Where's your Christmas hat, Holly?
My name alone should be. Christmas jolly enough.
You sound like Gary, just kidding.
Good morning, Commissioners, Holly Hennies, Commission Manager. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controver rule and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the Board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a Board Member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of December 1st, 2020. Number eight is to recognize and thank the volunteers for the month of November 2020, as submitted by Human Resources and Fire Administration. Number nine is to accept the recommendation for appointment of Patty Bruner, Matthew Oden, Mark DeSanto, and Dallas Voss to the 2021 Extension Advisory Board. Number 10 is to accept the recommendation for appointment of Karen McGregor to the Planning Commission. Number 11 is approval of the 2021 Community Development Grant Funds Application, as submitted by Health and Human Services. Number 12 is to declare asset number 06120, which is a RICO printer scanner, a surplus for the purpose of disposal for planning and zoning. And finally, number 13 is to declare four EF Johnson radios, a surplus for the purpose of disposal, as submitted by the Sheriff's Office.
Thank you, Ms. Holly. Is there anyone from the public who would like to pull any items 7 through 13 today? Not commissioned, any items 7 through 13?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Number 11, please.
Number 11? I'd like to pull number 10, because someone had a question on that. Any other? Not? Motion to approve the agenda with item 10 and 11 to be voted later.
So moved.
Moved by Drews.
Second.
Second by Roskinick. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Item 10 is, so people know, Ms. Karen will be filling Travis's term, which is June, if you could tell me that again, June 30th?
The remainder of the term would be through June 30th, 2022.
Okay, thank you. Just a clarification on that is all we needed, a couple of people have been asking questions on that. That's all I needed to know. Is there a motion?
I'd make a motion to accept the recommendation for the appointment of Karen McGregor to the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Commissioner Drews, first.
Second.
Second by LaCroy. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Next, motion to go into?
Number 11.
11, sorry. I'm forgetful, I didn't sleep good. Mr. LaCroy, sorry, sir.
Barry's already on his way up here. I only pulled this as for recognize what you do, Barry, and this comes from a community block grant that's a board gives out from the city for community block grants, but it's for, if you could explain a little bit about this, because I've referred people to you in your service of the Services for Health and Human Services, and so, you got to explain what this is all about.
Good morning, I'm Barry Tice, the Director of Health and Human Services, and I think Commissioner LaCroy had me come up here just because he wanted to see my flashy holiday sport coat. So, we've applied for community development block grants for the past 15 years, of course, most recently to help us in the efforts to respond to the pandemic with economic assistance for rent, utilities, mortgages. And so, this is what they consider CARES Act 3 going through the city, and so, there's an opportunity for us to access some additional funding. The benefit of these community development block grants is there's an extended period of time to access this, so I believe this one will go through the end of 2022. So, it gives us some additional time to figure out what's going to happen in 2021, and I think that's kind of the tempo across our nation, is trying to figure out what the economic impacts look like and the economic factors and every other variable that's involved with that. So, this would, you know, help us kind of start the planning as we creep into 2021 and figure out what we can do to help our community members. And while we're talking about this, I just looked at the updated amounts using the CARES Act funding through the state, which that application process ends this Friday, and we've administered just over $600,000 out to community members. Across the state, there's been 3,100 applications, and so, staff at Health and Human Services are working very hard to get these applications processed. I think as of this morning, there was 50 that had not been assigned yet, and we've done close to 500, so that's a lot of additional funding going out, and it's good, good for landlords, good for the other property owners, and good for the economy, because we're, you know, inserting some money back into that economy as well.
Well, thanks, Barry, because I just wanted to kind of bring that out a little bit, in that there is an application process and that everybody goes through when they're having these hard times, and I did this last time. I know I've got a couple of people who rent from me who have had to use your services, and if it wasn't for you guys and going through the application and working with them, they'd probably be in pretty difficult times right now. But I just wanted to bring that to light and thank you for your service and kind of give the community an idea of what you do.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Roskinick.
I guess for members in the audience, you might want to explain, a lot of this funding goes back for rents and mortgage payment assistance and.
Basically.
Shout out to Zermatt, so where's all this funding going? So.
So, the interesting thing is, for years, we use an internal database that was developed by Pennington County IT, and it's called Client Manager. So, anytime somebody receives assistance through our office, that's a way to generate the vouchers and the assistance, and so, we have names, thousands of names in there of individuals we've assisted with. And so, when we've gone through this process, I think it's important for the community to know that we're seeing names and applicants that we've never had come through our office before, and our office has been in existence for over 30 years. And so, this funding that came through the CARES Act through the state of South Dakota, we were able to start, we were one of 16 agencies across the state. At the end of October, the application process opened up, opened up to anybody in South Dakota that was impacted economically or physically by the pandemic. There was $10 million set aside for utilities, rental assistance, and mortgage assistance. So, we're seeing a lot of mortgage forbearances that have come due now, and essentially, it's like a large balloon payment. Some of these are being extended by financial institutions. We're seeing, and I've said this for a number of months, but the landlords in our community have been very willing to work with their tenants, which is great, but this has also provided an opportunity for tenants to pay the landlords back for the money they owe in arrears for the rents. When it comes to utilities, you know, there was, the city had initiated, they were stopping the disconnects that occurred with water bills, and so, some of that's being cleaned up now, as well as Black Hills Energy, and when they went back to starting disconnects again, this has helped people obviously keep their utilities on. So, it's a really, it's a win-win for our community and for the residents of our state, because we're keeping people housed. Hopefully, we're keeping people out of foreclosures as we, you know, enter some pretty unknown times going into 2021 and inject some of those financial opportunities back into the community and into the state. So, it's pretty remarkable. You know, in the 20 years I've worked in the human services field, obviously, this amount of money has been huge. It came at the right, right time, and I always go back to saying that, without the staff at Health and Human Services and the staff with the Auditor's Office, processing all these additional vouchers that are coming through and working with South Dakota Housing, sort of been a very difficult task to administer in a very short period of time, and so, it's working. We've got a lot of work to do here between, I say now on the 18th, once the 18th hits, then we'll have to process all those applications and get checks out the door, so.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Move for approval.
Moved by LaCroy, second by Drews. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Barry?
Nice jacket, Barry.
Bringing an auction your jacket.
Please, please don't give it to Lloyd LaCroy, because he's not.
He was asking about if you had his jacket on today, and I guess you did. Thank you for your team and what you do, Barry. You guys are amazing. So, next, we'll have a motion to go in executive session.
So moved.
Moved by Drews, second by Roskinick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Moved by Drews.
Second.
Second by Roskinick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 15, Ms. Cindy.
Good morning, Commissioner Cindy Muller, Pennington County Auditor. And before you, I have a slate full of overdue 2020 budget supplements. The first one that we have is SP 20-11 for Emergency Management Fund Supplement, in the amount of $291,640 from current year revenue and restricted fund budget, or balance, excuse me.
Sorry, Cindy, motion or discussion?
I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Drews, second by LaCroy, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 2, please.
Next one is SP 20-12. This is for the General Fund Law Enforcement Budget, in the amount of $258,735 from current year revenue.
Is there a motion or discussion?
So moved.
Moved by Drews.
Second.
Second by LaCroy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
The next one is SP 20-13, and this is a budget to the Capitol Project Fund Jail Laundry and Kitchen Remodel Project, in the amount of $2,680,000.
Motion or?
What's that?
Ms. Cindy?
I was just going to let you know, this is kind of just more of a cleanup item for the budget and the Capitol Projects Fund.
Move to approve.
Moved by Roskinick.
Second.
Second by Drews. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Number 4?
Supplement number 14 is the General Fund Jail Budget, in the amount of $15,000 from current year revenue.
So moved. Second.
That's a lot of money. Motion by Drews, second by Roskinick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
The next one is supplement number 15, and this is the General Fund Weed and Pest Supplement, in the amount of?
$40,000?
Two different numbers, yeah.
$40,000?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
$40,000, sorry.
So moved.
Moved by Drews.
Second.
Second by LaCroy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Supplement number 16 is the General Fund Natural Resources Budget, in the amount of $5,000 from current year revenue.
Motion or discussion?
Move for approval.
Moved by LaCroy.
Second.
Second by Roskinick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 7?
And this is supplement number 17 for the Accumulated Building Fund 2010B Budget, in the amount of $23,740,000 for restricted fund balance.
So moved.
Moved by Drews.
Second.
Second by LaCroy. And just a little discussion, the $23,740 was the grant?
No, this was actually.
Bond?
Yeah, bond proceeds that have been sitting in escrow, waiting to pay on the 2010B bonds.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 8?
Supplement 18 is the MacArthur Fund State's Attorney Budget, in the amount of $80,000 from current year revenue.
Motion or discussion?
So moved.
Moved by Drews.
Second.
Second by LaCroy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 9, please.
Supplement number 19 is the Accumulated Building 2017A Master Plan Refinance Budget, in the amount of $927,850 from Restricted Fair Debt Service Fund Balance. This is what's been paying the interest on that $23 million.
Thank you.
So moved.
Moved by Drews.
Second.
Second by LaCroy, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 10?
Supplement number 20 is the Accumulated Building Fund Budget Capital Improvement Supplement, in the amount of $1235,000 from current year revenue and restricted fund balance.
Move to approve.
Moved by Roskinick, second by Drews, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 11, please.
Supplement number 21 is the General Fund Abuse and Neglect Budget Supplement, in the amount of $50,000 from unassigned fund balance.
So moved.
Moved by Drews.
Second.
Second by Roskinick. Just a question, general fund abuse and neglect, unassigned means it comes right out of general fund, right?
Yes. Yeah, there's no revenue to support this.
There's no revenue left, what was the, I'm sorry, what was the amount in that budget to start this year, Cindy, and I apologize?
The original budget was for $500,000, and after looking towards year end and how many vouchers come in, in the December payables, as attorneys bill for everything that they've worked on in 2020, I just made an estimate that they're going to be short about $50,000.
Okay, thank you. There's been a motion by Drews, second by Roskinick. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 12, please.
Supplement number 22 is a General Fund Court Appointed Attorney Budget, in the amount of $200,000, and again, from unassigned fund balance. Just trying to project out to the end of the year what we're going to need to support that budget.
Okay, thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Drews, second by LaCroy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 13?
This is supplement number 23, the Accumulated Building Fund Capital Project Budget Supplement, in the amount of $547,000 from Restricted Fund Balance.
Move to approve.
Moved by Roskinick.
Second.
Second by Drews, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 14?
Supplement number 24 is the General Fund Election Budget Supplement, in the amount of $100,000 from current year revenue.
Motion or discussion?
So moved.
Moved by Drews.
Second.
Second by LaCroy. Second by LaCroy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item fifteen, please, Ms. Cindy.
Supplement number twenty-five is the general fund John T. V. Kervich budget and the Health and Human Services budget. And this is for one million, one hundred and fifty-five thousand, three hundred, and both of these are from current year revenue.
So move.
Motion by Drews, second by LaCroy. And again, a lot of these grants are done by Barry and Alex in the Health and Human Services. Takes a lot of work, takes a lot of time. And as we know from the six hundred thousand that we have spent through grants and donations this year, um, it's pretty amazing how much work that Health and Human Services and their team does. So we appreciate them, and this time during the holidays, it's, it's making a huge difference. So we appreciate that as well.
Madam Chair, I misspoke on that. The John T. V. Kervich budget supplement is for the sixteen thousand, eight hundred dollars. And then the Health and Human Services budget is the one point, one five five three.
Yes, ma'am, and we have that on our paper. I'm sorry, yours was different, but, okay. Motion by Drews, second by LaCroy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item sixteen.
Supplement number twenty-six is accumulated building fund stalling barn budget. And this is in the amount of five hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars from current year revenue and restricted fund balance.
Move to proof.
Moved by Ross Connect. Second by Drews. Just one thing, we'd like to thank the city. That five fifty-five was from the vision funds. Uh, it's made a huge difference in our stalling in the fairgrounds. I don't know if anybody's went to see it, but it's being well and very well used, and it's pretty amazing uh, how the fairgrounds has turned that into some revenue and doing well, a lot better for themselves, especially during this time of COVID. So thank you, Rapid City and the City Council for seeing that vision for us as well. Was a motion by Ross Connect, second by Drews. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item seventeen.
Supplement number twenty-seven is for the tip number four fund, the tip four budget in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from current year revenue.
So I'll move.
Motion by Drews.
Second.
Second by LaCroy. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item, oh, Commissioner.
Just on those supplements that we've just dealt with, those are monies that either have been spent or will be anticipated to be spent by the end of the year. Uh, those dollars, if, if they're not spent, uh, it's not, it's not like we're putting money out there that can be spent. It's money that's already committed, so, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Drews. We are on seventeen B. And then be liquor license been public here. It's Ms. Cindy.
Yes, this is for liquor license renewals with Sunday sales. We have three different ones. Moonshine Gulch Saloon, Rimrock Event Center, Antique Salon, and Grill.
Can we approve all those together, Ms. Cindy?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Is that okay, Board? Commissioner LaCroy, first, second by Drews. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
And the next one.
Bill of retail on off sale, wine and cider license.
Correct.
Do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Moved by LaCroy.
Second.
Second by Drews, and that's for?
All of them, Mexico Tipica, Summer Creek, Teacase Saloon, and Winery Hill City.
What Lloyd said? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
That was high country also.
Item sixteen, thank you, Ms. Cindy.
Thank you.
Have a great day. Who's this guy? Doesn't look like Kevin.
It is not.
Your name, sir?
Good morning, Chair, Madam Chair, and Brian Mueller, Chief Deputy Pennington County Sheriff's Office. Um, on item A here, it's our planned vehicle replacement for our patrol vehicles. We usually bring that forward every December. And the sooner we get on the list for these vehicles to be built, the sooner we'll receive those in twenty-twenty-one. So generally, we make a request to purchase the vehicles off the state contract for our patrol fleet in December, and we usually receive those vehicles in April or May of the following year. So, um, we have one extra motion that we, that we, um, to deal with today on motion number two is in reference to two vehicles that were totaled this year for insurance proceeds. But Liberty Chrysler, uh, Liberty Chevrolet here in Rapid City has agreed to sell us all of the new vehicles off the state contract at state contract pricing. And we're allowed to do that through the process as long as it's in the minutes here today, so.
Okay, thank you. So we do have a motion moved to declare the six vehicles as presented as surplus for the purpose of trading conjunction with new vehicle purchase.
I'll make that motion.
And by Drews. Second by LaCroy. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Motion two is move to declare the two vehicles as presented as surplus to be turned over to the insurance company. Motion?
Move to proof.
Moved by Ross Connect, second by Drews. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item three, authorize the sheriff's office to order to purchase seven new vehicles as presented.
Move to proof.
Second by Ross Connect, second by LaCroy. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Wish your sheriff Merry Christmas, please, from us.
We'll do that. And item B, if I may bring Sean Gab, he's our search and rescue team leader forward. We really appreciate how the commission has partnered together with us for the last several years to work on updating our equipment needs and our vehicles over at Search and Rescue. And Sean's been the team leader for about a year and a half now. And him and his team have really done a great job of working side by side with us at the sheriff's office to clean up a lot of the old equipment over there and, and work on updating the equipment so they can do their job more safe and efficiently. So I'm gonna let Sean tell you about a couple of exciting things that we have going on at Search and Rescue, so thank you.
Thank you, Brian. And Sean, if you would, kind of tell us what Search and Rescue does for our community, what kind of things that you actually do for us.
I sure will. So Search and Rescue, uh, not to give a really long story, but it started right after the nineteen seventy-two flood. A small group of community members came together and decided that there was a, an opportunity to help people in an organized fashion and be more prepared for the next event that might come up. So, uh, and in fact, that kind of rolls into what I'm talking about. Back in that time, um, that small group of people brought in some donation items for basic equipment needs that they had. They bought a lot of surplus goods. And, um, we actually, just this year, since we're from seventy-three to twenty-twenty, this year, we cleaned out what we call the SAR barn, the Search and Rescue barn. And still found items from that first group of articles that we got. And in fact, some of those were from the Korean War surplus, which was twenty years prior to that. But Search and Rescue, um, performs a lot of things for the community. We do searching, of course. Uh, and that can be anywhere in Pennington County and even some of the neighboring counties. We, we assist as well, so through mutual aids. We do rescues of many kinds. We do, uh, vertical rescues, rope rescue type applications. We do extrications on vehicle accidents. We assist the water rescue team, uh, with ice calls and uh, water, flowing water like creeks and streams and things like that.
Well, Sean, does the sheriff's office, does the police department, I mean, who calls you? Like you have a head guy, they call, kind of like the fire board, fire service board, the volunteer one. Do they call that person and then, then?
To dispatch to a call?
Yes.
Nope, we actually use the, the dispatchers that were here in the, the room today. We have a system set up with them for certain calls. If the call is in a location that is serviced by us and is indicating entrapment in a vehicle, for example, or a lost person, hiker, or any combination of things like that, they have, um, protocols in place to dispatch us right alongside the ambulance and, uh, law enforcement, fire departments, so.
And do you have to take, like, classes to be qualified, um, like a lot of the fire department and a lot of the?
Yep, we do, yep. In fact, we're just, we just have a class right now, this twenty-twenty class has just moved into what we call the probationary period. They finished all of their formal training, which has been quite awkward this year with COVID because of the group sizes and things involved with that. But, uh, yeah, there's formal training, and then we also bring in as often as we can outside training, external trainers that have a higher level of, um, knowledge on, on things that we use.
How many people are on your team?
We have about thirty right now, yep. Half of them are team members that have been on for a while, and half are trainees.
Nice.
We took a year off last year, um, for a number of reasons for the training. And just brought in a big group this year, and they've been doing great, so.
Thank you.
Another ninety days or so, and we'll have thirty full team members on the team.
Nice.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner?
Sean, you were the driver of the Sherp last year, right? I was telling somebody last night, I said, it's pretty unusual when you're, when you drive off of ice into open water, you just don't do that. And that day you said, are you ready? I really didn't think we were gonna do it, but.
Yeah, that was a very good training opportunity, yeah.
That was excellent. Uh, got a lot of PR on that one.
Yeah, we've been waiting for the ice to happen again so we can do that again.
Keep us posted.
Yeah, yep, and you're all invited to come out, of course, and, uh, experience that firsthand because it is unlike any other vehicle in the world, really. And to bring that to this community is a little bit outside the box, but has proven to be super useful. That actually is also part of what I'm gonna talk about today.
Well, when we approved it, uh, we were looking at it, the machine, is this a mountain, and then some accessories? And a bilge pump was an accessory, and I'm going, why do you need a bilge pump? Well, I found out.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's unique. It's, uh, it's amphibious. And I, I wish I'd have brought a video or pictures or something for everybody else to see today, but, uh, maybe next, maybe in January. We'll also bring some videos of how we've actually used it on calls here in the county, not just other promotional type things. So, yeah, it, it floats, it can drive through really deep snow, it can drive over wogs and boulders and things like that that stop UTVs, even when they have tracks on. That, that used to be the go-to vehicle, is a UTV with tracks. But there are quite a few disadvantages to that system, and this overcomes those. And there's a little more room inside for people. We put, on our demonstration ride, we put ten people inside the Sherp and then drove it into the Missouri River and paddled around for a while and then came back out again, so.
Yep.
Very useful for patient transport and transporting searchers and equipment into places that you can't get with other vehicles, so. Yeah. So we.
Sorry.
That's okay. Were there more questions on that part of it?
Oh, I.
Nope, keep, keep going. Sorry, I was just, um.
I don't think so.
Okay.
Very good.
You're, you're good.
All right. So generally throughout the year, we'll do some fundraisers. We're, we're nonprofit, even though we're organized under the sheriff's office. And we have a, a budget of around twenty-one thousand dollars from the county, budget of twenty-one thousand dollars from the city, which we greatly appreciate, of course. But we also have a fleet of eight vehicles and about as many trailers and a lot of expensive equipment and things. So we do fundraisers throughout the year to help supplement that budget internally. Uh, with the COVID nineteen and everything, we haven't done fundraisers like that. And we also, every year or two, we would put a few things in the county auction, surplus auction. And mostly, it was just to get rid of something and maybe replace it, um, depending on what the year is. But this year, we needed to be a little more creative. So we took a deep dive into the, the SAR barn, into the back corners where all of these things were from fifty and seventy years ago. And really looked at them all and decided what could go and what could stay and where the value was and everything. And we monetized a lot of that and put it into a, a super auction. And we did this separate from the county auction just because it was, the timing was different and the size was so big. We ended up with two hundred and fifty-two auction lots out of this barn. Normally, we have three or four or five, something like that. So, and in addition to that, we invited other people to donate items to the auction that some of the proceeds then would come directly to Search and Rescue. So it was, we turned it into a fundraiser as well and gave some people an avenue to dispose of some of the equipment they maybe needed to as well. And, um, one of the things that we did, we went to the mall. We had a, uh, Spinothum, I think I'm saying that right, real estate group manages the Rushmore Mall, and they donated an actual store in the Rushmore Mall for us to set all of our surplus items in. And, um, Jurish and Associates Auctioneering donated the auctioneering services, which can be huge in something like this. So that was a huge thing for us, and then all the volunteers at Search and Rescue transported all the items, cleaned them all up, presented them for display and allowed, uh, the public to come in several times before the auction for viewing. And it all seems to have paid off because in the end, the surplus items brought in about fifty-seven thousand dollars. And the donated items brought almost thirteen thousand dollars to the team. So it was a great fundraiser, and it was a way of turning some of these things that had been sitting around for decades into money that we can use on up, upgrading our other equipment and maintaining and replacing things, such as patient transports, patient packaging, rope rescue gear. We have a rescue truck that we are going to replace all of the rope and the hardware uh, with newer, more efficient rope that's smaller and lighter. We can have longer ropes, carry it in further and all of this good stuff. Personal safety gear and also preparing for the upcoming statewide radio system upgrade. Uh, the fire departments were able to get in on a grant that helped them replace all of their radios. We're not a fire department, so we have to come up with that on our own. So we, every year now, for the past several years, we've been buying a chunk of new radios that will be compatible with the new system. So that's what we're going to, uh, plan on spending the auction proceeds on. Now I'll tell you what the auction proceeds will not go towards. And this now marks a year from when we brought the, the original Sherp to this area. And, uh, it's provided tremendous capabilities to the county and, uh, has really shown its value as well over the last year. So we're really proud to say that we have a second Sherp coming. And none of the normal, what I would call the normal, things that are operational, the funding that we brought in for operational things will go towards that Sherp. It's all being paid for by private funds, which is super huge for us. And for the county, it shows that the community
Cares.
Now sees and cares, yep, and understands the benefit that it can provide. I know that it's, it's quite an awkward-looking vehicle, and it almost looks like a toy. So it's hard to take it seriously, but I think after some of the, uh, rescues we've been on and some of the ways we've utilized it, it became very apparent, so.
When you save people's lives, I mean, that's a huge difference, and every, everybody counts. And I think people understand that, and when the community sees, uh, some of that happening, it's, it's not just firemen and policemen, that Search and Rescue has some of those other skills as well that, you know, that make that huge difference, so.
It does, yeah.
The only, the only time I've ever, sorry, Sean, the only time I've ever seen the Search and Rescue is actually on TV.
Well, no, you were walking your dog one day. You remember that?
No, you guys were doing the Sherp, you weren't saving anybody.
Oh, the Search and Rescue.
They were, they were going through at, uh, Rushmore Park where the little leagues are. They were, had the Sherp there and had a little bit of snow. My dog did not like the Sherp at all. So, like, you wanna get in? I said, I don't think you want this eighty-pound dog in that Sherp right now.
Yeah, well.
It was, it was cool to watch, Sean, because they, they, they deflated it and did all the, the things, um, that they could do with it and then just watch them. It's, it looks like this toy, kind of looks like, it doesn't look like it's real because it just, the way it rolls and just, it's a little vehicle, but it's amazing what that little vehicle and who that can save in times of trouble, so.
Right, it's, it's a little vehicle, but when you get up close to it and realize it's eight feet tall and eight feet wide and eleven feet long, it gets big in a hurry.
I, I told Kevin about a year ago, I said, you know, what happens when you get the Sherp stuck?
Right, and that, that's exactly.
And so I thought, you know, you, you basically need two of those, so you're working with each other in case one does. Because you're out in the lake and you have an issue, you need another Sherp.
Yeah, and we have actually, just this year, had two calls where the Sherp was out on a call. And there was another call that required the services of something like a Sherp. Uh, we were able.
Does it flip over easy in the water when it blows up? Because it looks like it's not very heavy or something, like it just kind of?
Right. No, it doesn't. It doesn't.
Have to watch it sometime.
Oh, is it coming out of Bemidji again, the second one?
Yep.
Are they, have they gone up in price much?
No, they actually have come out with a newer model that's bigger. It's about eighteen inches taller, it's a couple feet longer, it weighs two thousand pounds more. Everything about it is bigger. And we put our order in before that to make sure that we could get one that is exactly like the one we already had for many reasons. But one, we wanted duplicates in case something goes down or whatever. You have a hot swap spare, we'll call it. The other is that in our use, even at that time, we just can't fit in the areas that we go in if it's much bigger than it is. We've been down by Hippie Hole. And we've been out in the in the hills in different places where you have boulders on each side. And if it's an extra six inches, you just don't fit. And we go under trees. And it's just, the size won't, won't do us good. So we locked in one of the last remaining units of the original size. And I think we're going to be super happy with that decision.
Have you ever flipped it on anything or when you're going down something, does it go on really steep? Or does it kind of tell you things you can and can't do?
But we installed some angle gauges for training purposes primarily. But we have not flipped it at all. We have seen that it can be done, but we haven't done it and we don't hope to do that. It will surprise you. It's more capable than most of the drivers. If the driver's not paying attention, it will try to do something that the driver's not prepared for. So you really have to, we have five Sherp trainers that are, these are the people that are trained to learn, to drive the Sherp in a, in any kind of an environment. And while it's, while it seems like you can go over things really easily, you can as easily get into trouble with it. If you try to fit between two trees and you misjudge by a foot, that tire on the side will actually crawl crawl straight up the tree and then you'll end up upside down. So you just, there are things that that can get you really quickly when you have that much capability. Were you going to say something more?
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, okay. I think I'm about done.
Sorry, a lot of Sherp questions, but that thing's pretty cool.
That's all right. It probably would have been boring if I'd stayed to the script anyway. So. Yeah, that's it, really. If anybody wants to see the Sherp in person, then perhaps get your feet wet. Give me a call.
You get some really big snow, then I'll go with you.
We'll give you a heads up when they have the next Walleyes Unlimited Fishing Tournament at Sheridan.
Sounds good. So for those who don't know, what we did last year for the Walleye Fishing Tournament, it was on Pactola. And we went out the day before and basically drove the whole lake to identify any weak areas in the ice and break them so that people on their four-wheelers didn't go on there and fall in and create an emergency. So we actually were preempting the rescue, which is kind of cool. What?
You're having fun.
Yeah. And we also then stayed unseen during the tournament and had each of the drivers cycle through and try the, it's, it's, as Mr. Roskineck said, it's very unnatural to drive off of ice into water or worse yet, being on the ice and then have it just break and crumble underneath you and you sink down in. It feels wrong. So it's something that you have to overcome.
Does it slide easy? Like, does it slip easy? Or does the tires keep pretty stable? Or do you have to put some chains or something on it on the ice? No, you wouldn't put chains because you're safe.
So, so the tires themselves, if you get on the ice and wanted to play around, you can do cookies and all that. But it does have traction if you drive it sensibly. And then on the new one, we're actually going to have a studded version of the tires, which will help a lot on the ice. And we, through donations again, added a trailer that is to be pulled behind the Sherp. So it has five-foot-tall tires, just like the Sherp does, and hooks onto the back of the Sherp. And it will go over the rocks and the boulders and through the creek and over the ice and everything and float, just like the Sherp. And with that, if we are on ice and break through and end up in the water and want to crawl back out again, we need a little extra grip. So the studs will come into play there. But we can put 2,000 pounds in that trailer so we can deliver water or equipment, pumps, whatever might be required somewhere back in in a horrible place that no other vehicle can go.
That's pretty awesome.
Two thousand in the trailer and 2,000 in the Sherp.
Well, and we're in South Dakota where there's a lot of places where the fire trucks and the emergencies responders cannot get to. And hopefully, for some of that emergency stuff like water and different things that, we had a bridge go down and had issues with some of that air, you know, things happening. We have a lot of open space here in South Dakota. So.
We do.
Makes a huge difference. Brian?
I'd just really like to recognize Sean and his amazing team for all of the work that they do, day in and day out, to keep our citizens safe. And for these fundraising efforts are just phenomenal during this time to to go out and work as hard as they did to bring in close to $200,000 worth of funds to upgrade our equipment is is pretty amazing. And we'll be bringing a supplement back to you folks. I've been working with the auditor's office on that at the beginning of the year for the proceeds for the auction to get it back in the search and rescue budget so we can actually buy that equipment. And then we'll, we'll hold another training when we get this new Sherp in and make sure the commission gets an invite to come out and check it out again. So.
Thank you, Brian.
And they have specific instructions that if they're gonna ever flip one over to not have a commissioner in it when it happens. Thank you.
And Sean, you're on many committee, many committees in this community. And I've seen you work. You work hard. And whatever committee that I have seen you on and been on with you, you put your 100% into it, 110%. So I'm sure with this search and rescue with you, you're a great asset. So thank you for all you do for our community as well, Sean.
Thank you.
You're making a difference. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Sean.
Item seventeen is COVID update by what's your name, sir? Mr. Dustin?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Dustin Willett, Pennington County Emergency Manager. So COVID-19 update, really, this is just kind of open to the floor. The the hot topic right now is obviously vaccinations. So Monument Health, as of Friday, was planning on administering the first doses of COVID-19 vaccine to their, some of their frontline staff beginning today. I don't know if that's happened, but as of Friday, that was the plan. So as long as everything is going according to plan, we'll have some frontline healthcare workers at Monument Health being immunized, starting today with COVID-19 vaccine. So again, the vaccination seems to be the the next phase of this. I will say that that if we look strictly at the numbers, our active cases are on another downward trend as we speak, which is always good, but we certainly see that variability. So when we look at that ensemble model moving forward, it looks like we'll see continued decreases in active cases, at least through about the first week in January. And then there's, just like we saw, you know, five, seven, 14 days after Thanksgiving, there was certainly a a increase in active cases that could conceivably, not 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 concretely, but can conceivably be related to to the Thanksgiving holiday and the gatherings that happened. We we would expect to see something similar a few days, weeks after Christmas as well. So while our numbers look like they'll trend down through the end of December, those numbers might kick up a little bit in the the first week or two of January as we, as we work our way through the the spread that happened over the holidays. Our numbers, though, still indicate that we we have active community spread. Make no bones about it. The disease is still moving through our our community. We saw a a spike in deaths that, again, the hospitalizations and the deaths correlate very, very nicely to active cases. And they all, they all peak about a week or so after each other. So you see the active cases, then you see the hospitalizations, then you see the deaths. So we have not seen any increase from the the Thanksgiving increase yet. That's probably coming here relatively soon. But in general, we expect to see those numbers decrease through the rest of December and then maybe a small uptick in beginning of January. But again, the the the, a lot of the effort and work that's going into things right now is in in the realm of vaccinations. So as a very basic recap, I know this is front-page news across the state and and across the nation. So I don't know that I have anything new to share, other than we we are receiving receiving allocations of vaccine. The the allocation is relatively small, seven, eight thousand doses. But they expect to see that at least every week. And and the anticipation is that those numbers increase. Right now, it's just the the single manufacturer. We certainly expect to see more than one manufacturer being delivered relatively soon. So that will increase the numbers. And then as availability and and production and manufacture ramp up, all of the numbers will will hopefully increase. So while we have a relatively small allocation starting now and and hopefully continuing in the weeks to come, we we expect those numbers to to increase. Happy to stand for for any questions that the commission might have.
You said there's only one manufacturer. I thought there was three.
So there's only, the the shipment that we're getting right now is from one manufacturer. So.
That's Pfizer.
The emergency, yep, the Pfizer, Pfizer, Pfizer and BioNTech. And so the others are still working their way through emergency use, use authorizations. But we expect to see a mix of manufacturers in the weeks to come. Right now, though, we we just have the the Pfizer vaccine coming into the state.
And I understand that 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 Pfizer is actually being manufactured in Michigan?
I don't know exactly where it's being manufactured. I can't answer that.
Michigan is one answer. I don't know.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Thank you, Dustin.
Sure.
Item B, sir.
So item B, this has been a a years in the making agreement. So this used to be called by a different name, Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. A year ago, FEMA made the switch to the BRIC acronym, which is Building Infrastructure in Resilient Communities. Again, mitigation is is fantastic. For every $1 invested in mitigation projects, the return on investment for response and recovery is $6. So a, a, you know, a six-to-one return on on your investment is pretty incredible. The trick is is getting that money upfront to do these projects. What's before you is an agreement. So the BRIC grants, you have to be a unit of government in order to apply to FEMA to get that. So the state applies to FEMA, FEMA grants the state money, and then local units of government within the state. So cities, counties, tribal organizations are then applicants for for those BRIC funds. The the types of projects that these mitigation dollars fund run the gamut. So one that's that's typically done, that Rapid City has done for a couple of years now, and this year they were successful again, is that's how they 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 fund their combustible roof replacement in wild and urban interface. So they pass the funds straight through to private property owners to to mitigate their flammable roofs so that they can better withstand a wild land fire. This particular project is from West River Electric. So a lot of the electric co-ops that are eligible to receive the funds but can't apply on their own. And that that change was made a few years ago, I think about five years ago. They used to be able to apply for funds directly, and now they have to go through a government organization to get those funds. But some of the the more typical projects, especially from the electrical co-ops, are power line burials. So they take their big, major transmission lines and bury them so they're less susceptible to ice, snow, wind, outages and 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 damage. So the end result is a a more resilient and more reliable power delivery to to the communities they serve. So at the end of the day, these projects serve our citizens very, very, very well with an incredible turn, return on investment. What it means for us is is we have to be the actual applicant in this particular situation. The agreement that you have before you is is pretty much the same agreement that we signed with the state. So if we sign that agreement with the state for those funds, then in this particular case, West River Electric will sign pretty much the exact same agreement that we have with the state, they'll have with us. So all the requirements are the same. For the most part, West River Electric will do all of the heavy lifting, all the legwork on all the grant requirements and auditing requirements and provide that information to our auditor's office, who will then forward it on to the state. So we do act as the as the broker, as the middle, the middle agent in this process. But the result is our community gets well-served by a very important and needed infrastructure improvement project. So happy to stand for any questions. And there is a representative from West River Electric if you have any specific questions on on their projects.
We have a motion or discussion? Discussion, Commissioner Drews?
Dustin, so third parties will not be allowed to make any applications for these funds in the future like this one? All will have to come through a government entity such as this to.
Accessing BRIC funds has to be done by a unit of government. Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Drews. Second by LaCroy. All in favor, say aye.
All right.
All opposed? Thank you, Dustin.
Thank you very much, President.
Dustin? I forgot. This was an awesome picture.
Merry Christmas.
It has Dustin, Alexa, Mark, and Pepper, and they're dressed like hippies. And it's the funniest picture. In fact, Dustin doesn't even look even close to Dustin. He's got sunglasses and stuff, but it's pretty cool. But thank you for that. I just thought that was like the coolest Christmas card.
I'm glad you enjoyed it.
Thank you from your team as well, sir. Your name, sir?
Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway. First up here is a local bridge or local federal bridge program funding agreements. And we were awarded these grants back in, I believe, June timeframe is when we were awarded these grants. These grants were some money that came down from the federal government to the state. And they administered those out to the local government agencies. They used their big program to award these, the point system. So we applied for three bridges and we got all three. The cost estimates are in those agreements. I don't know if anybody dug into those real deep. The first one is $646,750. The next one is $445,000 and the last one is $462,000. Of that, so that's just a little over a million and a half dollars. Of that, the county will be responsible for approximately $280,451. I I did talk to the the local government assistants yesterday, the who's administering this. We're just really early on in the engineering stages, so won't see any funding come out of the county budget for this in '21. It'll all likely be in '22 when they're constructed. So, but that'll stand for any questions.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews?
So are these the projects that we originally thought could amount to about 1.3 and now it's up to 1.5?
Uh, I believe so, yes.
Very good.
Thank you. So we have three motions here.
I'd make the first motion.
Motion by Drews for the improvements for State Department and second by LaCroy. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion two is to move the State Department Transportation Replacement Funding Agreement for Structures 52952341.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Roskineck. Second by Drews. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item three is for 52953340 for the same bridge replacement funding. Motion by LaCroy, second by Drews. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item B, sir.
Item B is we advertise and let for our our salt storage building. Bids came in very favorable. We reached out to a contractor last year to get kind of a a budgetary number to see what we're looking at for budget, budget-wise. And they came in quite a bit under that. With that, the the salt storage building is something that County Highway has needed for something for a long time. And we're glad to finally be getting this done in in '21. The the project was originally slated for '20, but due to the 10% budget cuts, we, this is one of the projects that got cut. So we're looking forward to getting this bid, built, can't talk today, built in '21. And all the, we opted for a concrete floor for its longevity. We feel that it'll last a lot longer than an asphalt floor will. And the bids were favorable to do that. We we wanted both those options in there in case that concrete floor, concrete's very expensive. So in case the the bids came in a lot higher, we wanted a different option. So that was the reason for that. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner?
I'll move to award the bid for the sand salt storage facility with PC concrete floor and base to Skull Construction Service, Rapid City, for the amount of $599,599,800. for the amount of five ninety-nine, five thou- or five hundred and ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred dollars.
Motion by Roskineck. Second by Drews.
Question. So location of this will be?
Uh, so it'll be, if you're familiar with our yard, it'll be in the northwest corner of our yard. We have a a loading dock there currently, uh, where it's going to be placed behind, to the west of that loading dock, to where we can, we can still use that loading dock and we don't have to build a new one. It'll require us moving some of our rock piles and spoil piles, but.
Okay, thank you.
Well, Joe, can you, PC concrete floor? You said you're not doing concrete floor?
We are doing the concrete floor.
I thought you said you weren't doing the con- because you said PC concrete floor. Does the concrete with the salt, does it eat away at that concrete pretty easy? Or is it coated with something so that salt's not taking that layer?
There's actually an additive you can add to the concrete. And we missed that in our bid, but the the rebar is epoxy-coated. So we got one of the two. It was brought up after the fact. So that may well be a change order um when we get this thing going to to add that additive in there.
Because we know what it does to our roads, so it makes common sense that that floor's going to be the same, and that's going to eat away pretty quick. So, thank you, sir. Was a motion by Roskineck, second by Drews. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item C?
Item C uh is our five-year plan amendment. So with a lot of the things that happened, you know, with Nemo Road, the the bridges on there, and with moving forward with Thunderhead Falls design this year, we were able to shuffle some things around. And then with our our inspections coming in in September, we had to put some more things on there. So this amendment is to just add structures to it is our majority of the changes. There are a lot of things that moved up a year due to the Thunderhead Falls design. So that's what this amendment is for, and it's a requirement of the big funds as well, so.
Thank you. You've had a lot of change in that five-year plan. How's that budget? And are we doing anything different for next year's budget because we had so many changes this year? And
No, we should be able to cover all of it with our twenty-twenty-one budget.
Thank you, because I know we did a lot of things that weren't kind of on the direction of the board, but some of that was bridges that we had no, you know, foreseen that we didn't know were going to happen in some roads in some different areas. I just wondered how that has affected a five-year plan, let alone a budget, so.
Right, yeah, we actually did just take a good hard look at our our twenty-one budget, and and we do have, everything that is on this five-year plan is on there. And we have money to cover it, so.
And did, is there any changes on that? You said there's amendment to the five-year plan. Is there any changes on there for twenty-twenty-one that are going to be pretty big?
Uh, the the only one, you know, a lot of, there's a lot of rehabilitation projects, or there's two, the High Seeger Bridge and then the one on Old Hill City. Those two bridges were due to the inspections that they've done. It's just going to be a real rehabilitation project, much like there were on Nemo. And then the delamination project on Nemo, those bridges, you know, we knew that was coming after this year, after the rehabilitation, so.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Moved to approve the mid-five-year transportation plan twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-five, which include the additional of the bridge structures numbers. I won't say them all, but.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion by LaCroy, second by Drews. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item D.
Item D is another requirement of our big program is we're required to have a a resolution to apply for those big funds, so that's what this is. We opted to go with a thirty percent match to make up uh, we're we're throwing a little more mon- of our local money into the the into the mix just to give us that boost up. You guys opted to go for the two dollars per wheel instead of the maximum of the five dollars, so we're making up that difference with that thirty percent match.
So can you tell us how much you're applying for? Or do you just put in, looks like you have three different bridges and you're
We're applying for two different bridges, both on Thunderhead Falls. And if I remember right, they're both around that six hundred thousand dollar mark, but I'd have to give you the the exact number. I don't have that in front of me.
Okay, so you're, and that's that's what we put in for the two dollars, but you're trying to see.
It's a twenty percent minimum match for the big funds.
So what it does is bring you higher to the list, is what you're saying?
Right.
When you add thirty and
It's a point, point system, basically. You get so many points for a certain number of things. And with only having a two dollar per wheel, wheel tax, we got four points instead of ten points.
So how many bridges can you put in, like, for the big? I mean, like, can you put six point five million dollars in and they give you one point two? Or, I mean, how does that work?
It's a, it's a rolling three years, and that number escapes me now. Mark, do you remember? Is it three million dollars? It's three million in a rolling three-year timeframe.
So in three years, you can get total of three million?
Correct.
Okay, so then you're putting in for this year, and that would be six hundred. Then are you going to do for the second and the third year instead of putting in the whole three-year plan to them?
Well, so they're all in our, we don't have enough money to cover that match for
I see what you're saying.
For enough, you know, all of those in one year. And it's pretty unlikely that they'll award all of those bridges. You know, we had several bridges that we could have applied for, but it's pretty unlikely that they're going to award all of them. So we opted to go with the two highest on the list for the most part.
Thank you, Joe.
To Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
So on that point system with with our two dollars, it takes us essentially from a a ninety point to a ninety-four point. The ideal is to be able to be at a hundred. If we had a five-dollar wheel tax, we'd be at a hundred to begin with. So that's why the offset from the the twenty to thirty percent is to build more of those points, give us better opportunity on those applications to.
And then we also put that in our budget, knowing that we had that thirty percent match on those, because remember, we only, if we were counting on twenty percent, at six hundred thousand dollars, that's twenty percent more is a lot extra.
Right.
But you you had that in mind beforehand for the twenty-twenty-one?
Correct, yes, we did.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
To move.
Second.
Move by Drews. Second by LaCroy. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed. Motion carries. Item E, please.
Item E, scenic township maintenance. So this is for maintenance in the scenic township that Pennington County has jurisdiction over. We've been doing this agreement for a number of years. I couldn't exactly find that, the number of years, but it's it's been ten, fifteen years that this agreement has been in place. It does both scenic a a service and it does Pennington County a service. We'd have to probably add another motor greater and another and more manpower to be able to maintain these roads ourselves. So it's a win-win for both si- for both entities.
Move approve.
Move by LaCroy.
Second.
Second by Drews. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item F, please.
Item F is a resolution to set the speed limit on Sheraton Lake Road. So construction is pretty much um complete for the twenty-twenty season. They've completed phase four, which is the urban section. So this uh speed limit is to permanently set that uh sp- speed limit from Alberta Drive to Spring Canyon Trail at thirty-five miles an hour. And then from uh Spring Canyon to Victoria Lake for the construction season, you guys set it at thirty-five miles an hour, so it was an enforceable speed limit. This will change that back to a fifty mile an hour speed limit from Spring Canyon going all the way to three eighty-five.
Thank you. Discussion or?
Move to approve.
Move by Roskineck, second by Drews. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item G, two motions.
Item G is the authorization to purchase two pickups off of our county's or the state bid. One of those is going to be a twenty-twenty F-five-fifty, um, just a cabin chassis. It is a, it's for the replacement of one of our signed pickups. It has a uh, that pickup's got almost two hundred thousand miles on it, and it's a miracle that it's lasted that long. If anybody knows anything about vehicles, the the Ford six-point-oh Powerstroke had a number of issues over the years and uh, it's starting to nickel and dime us and need more and more repairs. So that's one of the vehicles that we're looking to to replace. And then the other vehicle is going to be a a foreman pickup or a crew pickup. It's a three-quarter ton Chevy Duramax.
Thank you. First, we have the motion to approve the Silverado Chevy Silverado twenty-twenty-one.
Move.
Second. By Drews, second by LaCroy. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed. Motion carries. Next is a move to approve the twenty-twenty-one Ford F-five-fifty diesel.
Move.
Second.
Move by LaCroy, second by Roskineck. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you for coming too, Mark. Here's our good team. Item from Human Resources? It's Ms. Sandra.
Sandy Sortland, HR Generalist for Human Resources. We have the compensation administration policy for elected officials is first. We are recommending a one percent, approximate one percent increase for all county elected officials for twenty-twenty-one. This will match the increase that will be given to employees as part of the Gallagher wage scale that we're implementing effective twelve-twenty-seven.
Thank you. Discussion? Motion?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Motion by Drews.
Second.
Second by LaCroy. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
The second motion would be to apply the signature for the chairperson uh to the resolution for twenty-twenty-one.
I'd move to allow the chair to sign.
Move by Drews.
And then third, we are requesting
Hold on just a sec.
Oh, sorry.
Um, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Roskineck. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Sandy. Item B.
And third is to um allow Human Resources to request and secure vendor support for um a market analysis for elected officials, both the commissioners and the other elected officials in the county.
Move.
Second.
Who's that? Sorry.
That's the third motion in this one.
Oh, I only have two on here. Are we on item B, compensation administration policy?
Nope, this is still part of the elected officials compensation.
And I apologize, I didn't have, did you guys have number three?
No, Commissioners, I only put two motions on this one. When you approve an item, you're essentially approving the chair's signature. You don't need to do a separate motion for just that. So I combined the two together.
Okay, thank you.
Now you just need to do the vendor request.
Okay.
Okay.
I thought you were kind of going off key or I missed something, so.
Our test three on it, sorry.
No, not not your fault. I should have checked ahead of time, too. Item B, please.
Okay. Item B is an update to the compensation administration policy. Basically, this is for um, this, we won't be doing any um annual increases or the steps increases that we've been doing. We're just going to put everybody on the Gallagher scale for twenty-twenty-one and just leave it at that. There won't be any additional increases unless there's a promotion or something.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I'll move to approve.
Motion by Roskineck. Second by Drews. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item C?
Hey, this is um in regards to our insurance programs. As you know, insurance issues have been turned over to um HR in this year, and we discovered that there's an unwritten, kind of untalked-about agreement with the insurance agents of Rapid City um between us. And basically, we pay them fifty-seven thousand dollars annually, basically to be our agent. We send them on the invoice we received from the South Dakota Municipal League. They tack on their agent fee, and then we pay the bid. Or we pay the invoice then in the first part of January. We really can't see where there's a need for this, and so we're requesting your permission to discontinue this agreement with them. Basically, we'll just do everything directly.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
I I need to, since this involves uh my employer, I need to abstain from the discussion and the vote on this issue.
Thank you, Commissioner Drews. And we've been doing this for a while, so I agree with this. When we visited with the insurance company, they said they took that money and used it for nonprofits. Well, at this point, we could probably use that money for Health and Human Services or or one of our uh community uh things that we do. So we appreciated their service for all these years, but I think at this time, at least I should speak for one commissioner, that I um, I'm with uh what you guys are doing in the um HR department. Do we have a motion or more discussion?
Move to approve.
Move by Roskineck.
Second.
Second by LaCroy. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Second motion?
The second motion is to allow Human Resources to investigate and seek options that will provide sufficient insurance coverage. So basically, just allowing us to go out and make sure that we're getting the best insurance coverage that we can for Pennington County and its liabilities.
Move approve.
Move by LaCroy.
Second.
Second by Roskineck. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. And on those two items, Commissioner uh Drews has abstained.
Madam Chair, I think we missed uh the second motion on item A, which would be the the authorization to secure a vendor to go out and do the elected officials' wage study
Yes.
in twenty-twenty-one. I think we missed that one.
Where you at, Ms. Sandra?
On item A, it would be the third motion on the memo, but the second motion on your agenda.
So I have, on the first motion, I have moved to approve elected officials' annual salary in the resolution.
And you did that.
Item B is to the Human Resource Venture Vendor, and then Board of County Commissioners Auditor, and then we have no other motion on here.
I think, did you vote on the second motion?
Yes, Drews and Roskineck.
Okay, I just want to make sure. I think I missed that part.
Yes.
All right, second one.
Okay. It's all good.
Great, thank you.
Good to be sure. All right, next we have Ms. Brittany. We have planning.
We have a motion to open Board of Adjustment.
To move.
Motion to open by Drews. Second by Haddock. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item
We took a five-minute break. Pardon?
That's five minutes.
Five-minute break? Okay.
Okay, we don't have to close it, do we? Holly, we can take a five-minute. Okay. Been a motion and second, a five-minute break. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
Ready?
Yes.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Muller, Planning Director. Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Mulliter, Planning Director. Item A is a variance VA 20-13 for KG Capital LLC. Greg Krogman is the agent. The request is to reduce the rear yard setback from 25 feet to eight feet and to reduce the front yard setback from 25 feet to 16 feet in a suburban residential district. As the property stands today, it is vacant of any structures. The access is off of Weatherby Loop and it is located within the Murphy Ranch subdivision. This was routed around through the inner departmental review. There were no items of concern that came up. The only comment was from Rapid City Public Works, and they just stated that as long as the structure doesn't encroach into the eight-foot minor drainage and utility easement, they do not have any objection to this variance. There are four criteria for variance, and I will, they are up on the screen. I will just read the responses. There is no special condition that exists on the property such as exceptional narrowness, topography, siding, or the like. This variance to the setback would not grant to use, which is otherwise excluded from properties owned as suburban residential district. There is no circumstance or hardship that requires a variance to the setbacks. Due to how the lot was plotted, meeting the setback requirements would be more difficult, but could be done with a smaller resident size. Strict application of the zoning ordinance would require the existing property to meet the minimum setback requirements of 25 feet in a suburban residential district. Granting this variance does not appear to be contrary to the public interest, as staff has not received any calls or letters of complaint or concern. If approved, VA 20-13 would allow a 16-foot front yard and an eight-foot rear yard setback in lieu of the 25-foot setback in a suburban residential district, which is not in harmony with the zoning ordinance. Staff does recommend denial of this variance. However, if the Board of Adjustment chooses to approve this variance, staff recommends one condition being included.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
Can we, it appears that items A and B are by the same individual and they're similar in nature. Can we discuss them together instead of separately?
Is that okay with you two, Brittany? We can go to item B as well since they're.
Sure, and I could read item B. They're almost identical in nature. They just have a different lot description. It's just the way that these lots were platted with that round front edge of the almost pie shape. It requires a 25-foot setback from that whole section. And so the way that the lots are, the way that that lot is configured is difficult to put the house on it. This house is, is consistent with all the other structures that are being built in that subdivision.
So we can do item A motion and then the item B motion? Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have a motion on item A?
Uh, is there anybody from the audience that might want to speak?
Oh, I apologize.
Yeah, there, Madam Chair, I put the two speaker requests.
Oh, I'm sorry, Holly, I did not see those. So item A is Jim Skoll.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chairman, Commissioners. I'll just brief, I'll be brief. It's my development. I sold these lots, not knowing, I guess, that we had a challenge here with lot lines. Not knowing the regs, I guess, but I thought my engineer would get it right, but he didn't. So, uh, I'm here today. This is an affordable housing community. Thirty-two lots. As you know, they sell immediately. They sold before I started, frankly. This is what we have in our community today. It's kind of fun and worthwhile. Builders bought all the lots and they're going at it out there. So, um, these two, moving them to 25-foot, I guess I didn't realize they would both be considered back lot lines and not side lot lines. So, uh, it is consistent with whatever else, everything else we're doing out there. It's a really nice little area, so.
Thank you, Mr. Skoll.
If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Mr. Krogman?
This is the builder.
Yeah, I just want to point out, I guess, that my front lot line here is 160 feet, where most of the other ones are 80 or under. So that just cuts out so much of the building area. And then the back lot line is 120 feet where most are 70 or 80.
Yes, sir.
So I could leave you in a very small spot. The planning staff said a house could be built, but it would be a tiny house. It wouldn't be in consistency with the rest of these houses in that development.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Krogman?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
If we approve this today, can you foresee any circumstances that this could be harmful to surrounding neighbors? Or is it, would it all be pretty similar to each other? I mean, no adverse conditions with the.
I can't see any.
Why we ask that is we have to have, there's four conditions of giving a Board of Adjustment variance. And if we could meet those, then basically, if you guys can meet those or can't meet those, then we have to put why. So he's not saying you have something bad going on. He just, Ron, if I, I'm sorry, I'm speaking for you, but so they know, their faces are kind of funny looking when you ask them, like, what, what are you talking adverse? It's because he's reading off the four things that the criteria of our planning director and planning department put on us.
Just a.
Well, it's adverse in the sense that it's, that if you took 25-foot off all three sides, it leaves enough for about a 600 square foot house.
That's what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Thanks.
It's, uh.
Is that what you were thinking?
Yeah, I just didn't, approving this wouldn't be detrimental to the neighboring properties, what I'm trying to get to, which I don't see.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I'm going to attempt to make a motion.
Okay, sir.
Attempt. Things have changed, folks, of how we were going to do this, so it's, it's not a simple motion anymore. So I'm going to try, I tried to write it out this morning, so Colin, you can help me out on this. We got to meet these prongs, so I'm going to try and do it. We have to consider the entire public, not just the neighbors. Number one, does, does it injure the neighborhood? I put down no, it does not injure the neighborhood. It's, uh, the, fits in with the neighborhood, the size is good. Uh, does it conform to the neighborhood? And you just stated, yes, it does. The other ones are typical. You'd have to go down to a tiny little house if you, if you did. So what your questions into it. Does it conform to the general purpose of the zoning ordinance? And, uh, I put yes. I think the setback variances are affecting it and how it is, but I think it meets the general purpose of the zoning ordinance. And plus, we had no calls or letters of complaints from the neighborhood, so yes. Uh, does it conform to the conference, the plan? I said yes. Uh, does it harm public safety? I think, uh, the general welfare of the community, but no, it still provides a fire barrier, you know, they still have easements for utilities. That's what I have for that. Now Colin, on this, do I have to do the two-prong? This is, I know it is. It's hard for me too.
Colin McNeese, State's Attorney's Office. Commissioner LaCroy, you do have to make a finding on the second one as part of your motion. But excellent job so far.
For the second one. Uh, does, does it have special conditions, exceptional narrowness, topography, siding, or the likes exist? You know, the section lines aren't what they are. I put down no. And, and on the second prong, special conditions exist, uh, does enforcing, I put down no. No comments on this because they're no. Is that correct? Or do you need comments? Because that's going to be another 10 minutes here.
Commissioner LaCroy, if you as a commissioner want to approve the variance, then the as part of the finding on whether a special condition exists because of topography or something of the like, you would want to say yes because of the way the lot lines were configured outside of our platting jurisdiction.
Okay, I like that.
And answer the other two questions. Would it create a hardship? Uh, my understanding from listening to the builder speak is you would have, what, a six-foot or six-inch square foot house?
Six hundred.
Square foot.
Six hundred. It's a little different, not much. But otherwise, the motion so far is excellent.
Okay, so I'll change that on the second prong as a yes, because, uh, uh, the exception of narrowness of it does exist, I believe, because of the lot line configurations. Um, special condition exists, does enforcing the ordinance create an unnecessary hardship? I, I would say yes, because it's going to create the 600-foot of a drive if we do. Uh, special circumstances exist, does granting the variance observe the ordinance's spirit while doing substantial justice? I believe it, yes, it does. By granting the variance, we, uh, will be conforming to the neighborhood. And with that, I would make the recommendation of approval with one stipulation.
I'll second that.
Motion by LaCroy and second by Drews.
So basically, what's your motion?
Yeah.
Put all that in there, so you're.
Ah, I hear you.
That's a good question, Karen.
Because you're disagreeing with the staff's findings, correct? Okay, and your reason for disagreeing with the staff's finding is?
All the stuff that's red. Okay, but we do have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Yes.
By Drews. Okay. I'll let her finish and then we should begin. There's got to be a simpler way, Colin, that's crazy. So, um, it's confusing to the.
Just for a comment, when you get through this one, mimic for the second one.
Yeah.
Okay, Karen.
Yeah.
There's got to be something better, Colin, because you're confusing those guys in the audience and you're confusing us. And maybe we just need training, but there, I've never seen this, this much work in one thing, so I'll just tell you that, so.
Madam Chair.
And I've been doing planning for a long time.
And that's why we want to, Colin, we want to get together next month and we want to sit down, and we don't want to have to do this in front of an audience. We need to have a little more control on this, and so we can address some of this, uh, my concerns with the checklist, because not everything's black and white. There's some gray areas sometime, and this is where it gets confusing for us, because we want to do what's right for the county, but we also want to do what's right for the taxpayers. So I am totally in agreement with Lloyd on this one.
Yes, Commissioner Ross Connect and Madam Chair.
We, we thank you for everything you're doing, Colin, but, um, it's a little confusing. Um, by the way, we do have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. We have a motion on the same thing for the next one with the.
Take that motion on item B.
Okay, motion by LaCroy.
Second.
Second by Drews. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. So you've been approved on both of those, by the way.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item C.
Good morning, Commissioners. Again, item C, you have seen this property. Um, they did do a lot size variance on this property and a plat for this property. Uh, this variance is VA 20-15. Um, it was brought forth by our office because there was a building permit that was submitted for the structure on this property, which the house does not meet the section line setback, so staff has brought this forward to bring this property into compliance. It's to reduce the section line setback from 58 feet to 28 feet to bring an existing residence into compliance in a general agriculture district. Uh, as I stated before, you have seen this request in front of you before. Uh, the property is owned general agriculture district. Later, or earlier this year, uh, this board did grant a lot size variance for this lot in the general agriculture district. The access is off a little tiger lane. Um, it consists of 4.5 acres. Um, this was routed around through the inner departmental review process. Um, there were no items of concern that came back. Um, staff does feel that this, the improvement of this section line would probably not happen in the near future. So the encroachment issue is none of concern. As far as the criteria for the variance, I will read the responses for the four criteria. There's no, no special condition that exists on the property such as exceptional narrowness, topography, siding, or the like. This variance to the section line setback would not grant to use, which is otherwise excluded from properties owned as general agriculture district. Uh, county building permit 2003 COBP 0208 was approved by the planning and zoning with a setback of 40 feet from the section line. Strict application of the zoning ordinance would have required the existing residents to meet the minimum section line setback of 58 feet. And finally, access to the existing properties in the area is provided via planted rights-of-way and easements that do not utilize any portion of the section line on the subject property. Granting this variance does not appear to be contrary to the public interest, but is not in harmony with the zoning ordinance. As I stated before, you have seen this property and other requests. On November 23rd, 2020, the Board of Commissioners did approve a minor plat for this property to reconfigure the lot lines between the two lots. And, and approval of this variance will satisfy number, condition number two of the minor plat and bring the subject property into compliance with the Pennington County zoning ordinance. So staff is recommending approval of this variance with one condition.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Ross Connect, second by LaCroy. We still in Board of Adjustment?
Yep, we got six.
So you have to tell your reasons now?
Nope, this one was recommendation approval by staff.
So if they recommend it, we don't have to have a reason?
She just read them all off.
All right. Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed. Motion carries. Item D.
Item D is variance VA 20-16 for Wade and Michelle Rice is to allow a four-foot side yard setback on the west property line in a suburban residential district. Um, as this property sits today, it is owned general agriculture district, which requires a minimum 40-acre lot size. It is .69 acres. It is vacant of any structures. There is no special flood hazard area. The access to this property is off Nemo Road. There is a section line right of way on this property, but it was vacated by the Board of Commissioners on November 8th, 1977. Uh, the purpose to, um, do this lot size variance is because the property owners would like to replat three of these properties. Um, it will be replanted through the city of Rapid City. They would like to absorb this small sliver of a lot.
That blue.
Oops.
I, I read the wrong one. I'm sorry, there's two of these for this.
Yeah, that's, uh.
This is the setback one, so I apologize.
Um, because there's two different requests for this property. There's for a setback and for the, um, lot size variance. So this one is actually to allow a four-foot side yard setback on the west property line in a suburban residential district. Um, this one, um, this property, like I said, they would like to combine this, do a re, a lot line reconfiguration. Um, so the next request is for the, I know this is, this one is very confusing. It's been very confusing. Um, because there is a small sliver of a lot, if you can see, to the west, um, that's in general agriculture district. They would like to, um, plat that into that lot and a lot to the north. And in doing that, um, they're doing that through the city of Rapid City, and then they would like to construct a camper garage on the west property line, um, to, and that's what would be the four-foot setback in lieu of the eight-foot setback. Um, in order for them to do the plat, um, they do have to get the lot size variance um, for that small sliver to, for the city to redo the plat, um, and absorb that in, and then do the setback variance. So ultimately, for this property, and it's the next two requests, it's kind of similar to the other one, D and E are somewhat together. There's a lot size variance for that small sliver, that .69 acre lot. And then there's a request for a setback variance, um, once these properties are planted, to allow a camper garage, um, to be constructed on this property. So, um, as far as the, the request for the setback, um, there's the property, aril of the property. Um, staff does feel that there is adequate room on this property to construct the camper garage on other areas of the property. So with that, staff is recommending denial of VA 20-16, since it's not in harmony with the intent of the zoning ordinance. However, if the Board of Adjustment chooses to approve variance VA 2016, staff recommends one condition.
So Brittany, I have a question.
Sure.
So the last one said staff recommends denial, but on, these all say that at the top. But Pennington County brought that variance for it on C? So that made it so it was okay with staff to go ahead and approve it?
So with that one, we felt like because it was a section line setback, so the section line has the 33-feet setback, and then you have the additional 25-foot setback from the section, from the 33-feet. So actually, you have a 58-foot setback to the center of the section line. So this is the previous one.
Right.
Um, so with that, and because the building permit was approved by, um, our office back in the 2000s for that structure, with a 40-foot setback, um, staff just did recommend approval to bring it into compliance. One of two things would have to happen with that section line. It would either have to be vacated, or an encroachment agreement will have to be um, done, um, in accordance with the other ones, um, like an agreement that would be filed with the registered deeds. Um, that one, because it's still meeting the overall, like, setback of the 25-foot setback, that's why staff recommend approval on that one. That and the other was, is, that was no fault of those property owners.
I guess my question was.
Because the building permit was approved with the incorrect setback.
But on our sheets, it shows that you recommended denial.
Yes.
I'm sorry, that's, that's a typo on my part.
Okay, that's why I was like trying to defer, not trying to go back to the other one, but it's like, these aren't making sense if, if.
That was an absolute mistake on my part.
D says denial on ours, or C, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Actually, all of them do. Is there any other ones that aren't that way, Holly?
That one was approval. The others should be denial.
Yeah, all of the other ones would be denial.
That's why you confuse me, because I'm like, okay, you put on the top denial, and then you, you should have to say the reasons from staff then.
I was, I read through it.
And then.
On the paper.
We should copy those, but it's all good. Okay, sorry, guys, that was confusing me.
No, I, I get it.
Okay.
Is there a speaker request on this?
Um, this, we were just talking about the other one, just why they were doing denial. Okay, sorry, Ross Connect. So, um, are the Rice's here? Would they like to speak on this? Sir, if you'd like to come up, sir. Are you Wade, sir? Okay, come on up to the diocen. Give us some information on D and E, sir.
I want to thank you for your time. Um, if you could put up the, the properties on the screen.
And your name is?
Uh, my name is Wade Rice. So where, where you see the yellow line going horizontal, and then I thought it would continue, the sliver is actually the whole line all the way down to Nemo Road. That's 25-foot.
That's the blue sliver?
What's that?
It's in blue on there in the sliver?
Yeah, it's blue and yellow. So on my dad's lot, the burnt house, um, he's 87-years-old. I'm just trying to clean up some of the messes that he's going to leave the family with someday. And we have somebody that is interested in buying his burnt lot, which has been burnt down since 1888. So, um, we got a surprise in 1989 when they surveyed it after the fire, that we where, where that 25-foot is, is what we thought was ours. That's the, the fence line that was there originally. So we thought it was ours. Otherwise, we'd have never built the houses where we built them. So the Forest Service was, um, we were lucky enough that the Forest Service let's buy that 25-foot. But after we bought it, it was ag, and we never separated it between my dad's lot and my lot. So now to get this other house sold, we need to have it replotted and, and fixed. So, um, again, we're just trying to make good on what originally we thought was ours. So, um, like I said, I'm going to try to clean this stuff up, you know, while he's alive. And so, you know, we talk about hardship, you know, we don't know if we got tomorrow. So. So would like to do that. So I would actually like to talk about E first, cause that's way more important than my.
Madam Chair, can I ask Wade a question? So what I originally understood you to say is that you actually had a survey though that showed that, that that was your property or?
Well, what happened was, I, I don't, somebody had surveyed it. Otherwise, they would have never built the house like they did. So um,
But it wasn't, but it wasn't.
I think the original survey was wrong.
Okay.
So I mean, it was to our surprise that that, that was happening. So, you know, looking at that, I supposedly had, and my dad supposedly had X amount of square footage. Well, you can't expect us to move our house and then take the other person's property away from us. So that's why the Forest Service let us do what we did. I mean, his house is actually eight inches on, on the government land originally.
Okay.
So again, we, we, we really need to get that, that line put in. And that's what the main purpose of, of me being here. Um, I knew we're gonna invest some time and invest your time. Um, if I was ever gonna build a garage, that's how I'd wanna do it. So that's the, the other one. So um, just trying to make it right. I don't think it infringes on any of the neighbors. I mean, there's nobody on that side because it's Forest Service land. I believe that section line is vacated.
Madam Chair.
Uh, Commissioner.
So background, nineteen eighty eight, nineteen eighty nine, the Forest Service resurveyed the entire Black Hills. And they found a lot of encroachments. And so that piece of uh, point six nine acres, they call that is a small tracks hack. And they would let people, as an appraiser, I'd go out and appraise these little fractions to fix these uh, encroachments and whatnot. And when uh, so they had to, we had a father and son and they were both encroaching. So what they did is they just marked off enough to make sure that both properties were non, uh, that, that they weren't encroaching. However, they didn't. Uh, it costs double the money if you would have partitioned that one piece and the two pieces in them. Just to fix encroachment and family, father and son living next to each other. It became one piece and now they're just trying to, uh, so you can sell one property, they're just trying to sit there and, and replant three lots and the two lots and call it a day. And as far as the setbacks, if you blow out this a little bit more, the side of that shop would be roughly from the nearest planted lot would be five thousand two hundred and forty feet to the west. I mean, that's, that would be your closest neighbor. And I don't, I don't, uh, just running on common sense. I don't see where approving this variance would cause any hardship on any other uh, individual, especially if they're a mile away. Going across Forest Service land, you got a sixty, or you got a hundred foot ravine there that obviously you're not gonna see any roads in the future. But so I'm, I'm for the variance.
Okay, are we on, do you wanna vote on D and then move to E or you wanna?
Yeah.
Okay, let us vote on, oh. Um, usually we fail out of speaker's requests, but yes, you can. Are you on I?
He, he is a neighbor of mine.
Okay.
I'm a member of.
Come on up, sir.
Introduce myself, I didn't know I had to go through.
But that's okay.
The procedure to speak before the commission, I appreciate the opportunity.
Oh, no, we don't, we don't have a problem. We just, sometimes we just tell you that so you know the next time you come up.
I have a hard time hearing you, but um, my name is Michael Harris and I'm a member of the Westbury subdivision. And for over twenty years, I've uh, been in that subdivision. And over this course of time, we have had to watch carefully uh, the development that goes on around our subdivision. Now to the south of us, we've got a, a number of acres that we have contained to forty acre development sites with one dwelling per, per uh, forty acres. I feel that if we allow this variance for Mr. Rice, we'll set a precedent for other opportunities in the future for development that's sure to come. But we have spent a number of dollars on litigation and um, been before this commission in the past, I've, I've been here twenty years ago when there was uh, an issue about landlocked access coming through Westbury. And uh, we were able to defeat that. I don't really wanna see us getting into a can of worms here by allowing this precedent to be set by a mistake that was made nearly forty years ago by property owners and contractors who didn't bother to find out where the property lines were. And they went based on what I've heard from Mr. Rice and his father on old fence lines and didn't bother to find out where the actual property lines were. Now, when having this recently surveyed within the last few weeks, Mr. Rice's survey does not coincide with my survey that was done when I purchased my property in nineteen ninety seven, nor does it coincide with the neighbors to the south of Mr. Cooley, nor does it coincide with the forestry service boundaries. So I believe there's a dispute as to actually where the lines are at this point. So I don't think it's proper at this time to allow this variance to proceed. I thank you for my opportunity to speak with you.
Thank you, sir. So Brittany, can you tell me the four foot, hold on just a sec. Brit, I just have a question. The four foot issue is on the Forest Service area, not next to the neighbors, right? It's on the west side.
Yeah, it's on the west side. So if they, oh, this is the one.
So it's not, it's not encroaching on any, any neighbor's property. It's just going into the neighbor, or to the Forest Service area on the west side, if I'm correct.
That is correct. The property owner to the west is the Forest Service.
Okay, so buying land on the opposite side, not affecting the neighbors is a little bit different. Okay, sir, Mr. Rice.
Okay, we had KTM Designs resurvey it and they did find the original inch and a half rebar to set these property lines. So I know they're right. The stuff he's talking about is for some other day. We're just trying to combine those lots.
Yes, sir.
So we can get back to where we thought we were when we first purchased.
Right.
And, and that will let us go through with the sale and let the city do their due diligence to, to do the, the replot. So it's, it's really simple. So would appreciate.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Do we have a motion or more discussion?
I made a motion to approve.
Okay, I'm sorry. So a motion by Ross Connect. Is there a second? Second by Drews?
One condition.
One condition?
Yeah, there's one condition.
One condition.
With one condition?
With one condition.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, item E, sir.
Okay.
Brittany, would you like to help? Thank you.
So item E is just that small sliver that we were just discussing. It's currently zoned, general agriculture district. Uh, most of all of the Forest Service lands is zoned, general agriculture district uh, in the hills. And in order for them to be able to plant it through the city of Rapid City and absorb it into that, um, they would either have to rezone it to suburban residential or get a lot size variance um, for the general agriculture district. Uh, so this request is to allow that point six nine acre lot um, as general agriculture, um, as a lot size variance.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Rice? Do we have a motion?
Uh, Madam Chair, just, I just wanna speak, when the Forest, when they did these uh, small track acquisitions, because it came off of Forest Service land, it just naturally was considered ag. And at that time, to me, there should have been a mechanism where the county got involved and said, you know, we're gonna have to rezone. Should have been done back then. And so we're just, to me, we're just fixing something that should have been done a long time ago. So there again, I'm gonna uh, approve uh, this variance.
Motion by Ross Connect?
I'll start.
Second by Drews. Okay, and anybody in the audience like to speak on this issue? Did you wanna speak again? Okay. Okay. Okay.
I guess I mistakenly was addressing this issue when you were talking about the four foot setback.
That's okay.
I apologize for that.
Okay, sir.
But I reiterate the same thing, that's setting a precedent. It's um, an unnecessary thing to go through. Mr. Rice has two acres of lot size there. He could have uh, made other arrangements for this four foot setback, I believe, but that's already been approved. But once again, I think you're opening up a door for multiple acres to the south of us and other tracks that surround Westbury Trails that we have kept to a minimum on development for multiple dwellings on small acres. And this to me is just once, an, an opportunity for development to use this as a precedent. And then once again, we'll have, we'll be in front of the board going through this over and over again. So why not stop it right now?
On this, on this case, he had to clean it up. Basically, he had to clean up his land, so he bought um, Forest Service land to the west of him. That's what he did it for. So he wouldn't encroach and be in trouble with the Forest Service, let alone not meeting our setbacks. So, but, sorry, sir. But he cannot build on Forest Service land, so he, on that, whatever acreage, he can't build anything on that sliver he has going this way anyway. I mean, he could, but if Forest Service lets him, but I think he's doing it more for a cleanup, not to do uh, more building on it.
No, it's actually for the lot to the north, his father's lot, and I thought explained that.
Yes.
That, that is set up in such a way that uh, the purchaser of that lot wouldn't be able to rebuild on the same location as the old property was.
Right.
So there again, you're opening up, well, I think the forestry services did this for a reason. When they allowed the trading of this property or the purchase of this property, let the Rice families keep their houses and not make an issue of moving their property. At that time, when they gave them that sliver property, they could have said, okay, this is uh, also gonna be included in your residential zoning, but they didn't.
So you're saying that this is gonna be two, is gonna be a bigger lot than what you wanted, or you think it's gonna be split? Guess I'm not getting where you're going, sir.
You don't follow, and I'm, I'm talking about future development.
Right.
And that's forestry service land to the west of there, but that's not saying that's gonna be that forever.
Right.
They trade and sell land.
Right, so you don't want your subdivision to get any bigger? Is that what you're trying to tell us?
Well, our subdivision won't get any bigger. I don't want encroachment on, out, on other subdivisions that might come in the future.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
What?
I've been appraised in real estate for thirty five years, sir, and I've done a lot of work for the federal government. They quit doing land exchanges. The Forest Service can't purchase, they can't sell that property. I mean, even if the Black Hills region wanted to sell that property, by the time they got to the feds, it'll never happen.
I wouldn't say never.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say ninety nine point nine nine percent. I don't think you'll ever have to worry about any development going to the west in that next section.
Well, I'm, that's not the, so much the concern as to the, to the south.
Okay, the, the property to the south, is that private ownership or is it national forest?
It's private ownership.
If it's private ownership, then the owner has every right to put a covenant on there to restrict its size. So if it's private ownership, they have the right to sit there and say what can, that land can be used for and what it can't via a covenant. And if they haven't done that and they don't want development, I would suggest that they get an attorney and do so.
Well, I believe, sir, that Westbury Trails, this was before my entry into the subdivision, but soon enough, uh, after I got there, that um, it was a talk at the board meetings that uh, Dr. Nelson bought that hundred and twenty acres to the south of Westbury Trails and put a home up there. Westbury Trails made uh, how, I, I don't know how they litigated it, but they uh, made sure that out of those hundred and twenty acres, there would only be three forty acre plots that would have one house per forty acre plot. And we have withstood that now for as long as that I've been in Westbury. And that property has changed hands three times since I've been there. And we've maintained that. Now, the issue is the development would come through Westbury Trails roads. And we maintain our roads, we pay dues to maintain our roads. And this neighboring development, should it come, would come through our development and our roads with no compensation. So this is an issue for Westbury Trails and has been for forty years.
Thank you, sir.
And I don't believe that we should so nonchalantly let this pass without giving it some serious consideration of what the future might bring. Whether you think it would never happen, I don't believe in never. And I have seen the forestry service from the time that I've been here in the hills, sell and trade property. So it's not out of the question. And the property values have been always first and foremost in the discussion at Westbury Trails when something comes up like this.
If I thought that by approving this today, we were gonna jeopardize your property rights, your neighbors' property rights, I would not be voting to approve it, sir.
Okay, guys, guys, okay, we need to stop for a second. So um, we respect your opinion and thank you for, thank you for coming today.
I appreciate that.
And we're gonna discuss it a little bit more.
You know, I have to apologize for not knowing who my commissioner is. The last commissioner I knew was Mr. Davis.
Yep.
And who is my commissioner now?
That'd be me.
That would be you, Mr. Ross Connect? Well, I, if had I known that, I perhaps I'd have reached out to you sooner and we could have discussed this uh, a little more in advance and perhaps persuaded you in a different manner.
In the future, I'm always available.
Hey, Ron.
Well, had I.
Okay, guys, guys, you need to stop. We have a meeting and you need to say chair and, before you speak, so we can call on each one of you. I appreciate that. Thank you for your input today, sir. And then maybe Ross Connect can get your, Commissioner Ross Connect can get your phone number, maybe call you later if that's cool.
Oh, that'd be great.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Mr. Rice, please.
It's really hilly area and the best place to put the, the, the toy garage or, I don't even have a motor on, but somehow I really want one. Um, I want it connected to my house. So that's the only place to connect it to my house.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do we have a motion?
Think there was.
I think you, I think you've got a motion, sir.
I've got a vote. Oh, I got D, Ross Connect and Drews, sorry. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Okay, that was item E, right?
Yep.
Okay. Item F, thanks for the good discussion, you guys.
Good morning again. Um, item F is subdivision regulations variance S V twenty dash zero five to waive submittal of percolation tests and soil profile information in a planned unit development. Um, this request is in response to a layout plan that you will see um, later in the meeting. Um, the applicant, Mr. Corey Brown, is in the process of reconfiguring lot lines with a neighboring property owner and has requested to waive the submittals of the percolation tests and soil profile information as part of the process. Um, he is not looking to build um, immediately, so he um, wanted to waive this right now because he is not sure and has not decided on a building site um, for the property. Again, here is the four criteria for the variance, I'll briefly.
I think we know them, thank you, Brittany. I'm not gonna try to sound rude, but I think we know the four criteria. Thank, thank you, Brittany.
Sure. And there's two lots that um, are associated with this. Uh, the lot track seventy eight R is vacant of any structures or utilities. This was routed around through the interdepartmental review. Um, there was no items of concern that come up. We did, however, receive. Um, there was no items of concern that come up. We did, however, receive two um emails on this, I believe you guys, did you guys get copies of it? Just requesting that um we not waive these requirements. Um, as you know, staff does not recommend approval unless there is absolute extenuating circumstances. Um, but with the percolation and soil profile whole information, um that is handled at the building permit process, so I did want to really reiterate that. Um, but staff is recommending denial of subdivision regulation variance SVE twenty dash five. However, if the Board of Adjustment chooses to approve, um staff recommends one condition.
Thank you. So, again, you have to do the percolation and the soil if he decides to do any building. So if I, I as one commissioner today know if he builds, then he has to do that. Hopefully, the people that sent you the emails know that he's not going to be able to waive it once he has to do his building permit, because he has to get those, that septic and the soils to make sure that septic's going to be where it's supposed to be in the right place. So it makes sense to me um not to have him do the percolation and
And chair.
Profile, soil profile.
Brittany, how big's uh track seventy-eight?
I believe it is track seventy-eight R is eighteen point four-three acres and track seventy-eight is twenty-two point one-two acres.
So our last meeting, when David Grover got up in front and he made a pretty good case, he said, if I've got five acre lots and I do the soil profile on the perk, uh nobody says that that, that's where the house is going to get built, so when you got eighteen acres and you went out there and you, you made them do a soil profile on the perk, and you got it, uh it just, that might not even be where do you decide you're going to do that? When they don't even know where they're going to build the house yet.
Correct, and they can just make assumptions on where they'd want to build the house, and a lot of times they want to look at it to where it's going to be the lower spot, wherever the higher spot would be for gravity, and without knowing that, you know, in some of these areas that have topographical changes, that could be difficult.
Well, just to be consistent with the way we voted on the Rover issue, I'm going to have to, uh, personally, I'm going to have to approve it.
Okay. Do you have any discussion, or do we have Corey, you want to talk about your percolation and profile soil? Profile, can't say that word today.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. How are you today?
Good, sir.
Uh, pretty simple. I don't plan on building a house there yet, and I will do a perk test when I build a house, but seems unnecessary right now.
Thank you. Anybody have a motion?
Move for move to disagree with the staff's findings for the criteria for the variance request to move for approval.
Moved by LaCroy. Second by Drews. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Brittany, are we coming out of Board of Adjustment, please?
Yeah, one more. No, I'm sorry.
It's okay, Drews. Moved by Drews, out of Board of Adjustment.
Yep.
Second by LaCroy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Sorry, we've been here for a while, so we're a little bit slow today. Consent agenda, please, Ms. Brittany.
Uh, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on uncontroversial and routine planning and zoning items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may remove from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following one item. Item G is minor plat MPL twenty dash thirty-nine for Ray and Elizabeth Strand. Fisk Land Surveying is the agent, and approval is recommended.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak on item G? Is there anyone from the commissioner who'd like to pull item G? If not, a motion, please.
So move.
Moved by Drews.
Second.
Second by LaCroy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Consent or regular agenda, Ms. Brittany?
Um, item H is tax increment finance district number five for the city of Box elders for the purposes developing the Liberty Plaza and the Liberty Center. Um, there are three resolutions um as part of this tax increment finance district. Um, as you can see on the screen, the location of this district will be at the intersection of Liberty Boulevard and North Ellsworth Road, and there are, uh, the applicant is in the audience, and he will present on this, Mr. Tobin Morris.
Sir, your name?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Uh, Toby Morris with Collier Security, representing the city of Box Elder as the applicant for this tax increment district. Excuse me. What I'd like to do, um, I will go through some of the technical aspects of what I think is probably one of the most impressive public-private partnerships. Because what you have before you today is you have the county with the city, with the state, with a private developer, all coming together is probably going to be one of the biggest impacts that we see to western South Dakota. And so from a technical standpoint, I know I've come before this commission before, when uh last year the city of Box Elder approached for their community center and doing a lot of the infrastructure, anticipating a gain uh for the Ellsworth base. And so what you see here before you today mirrors quite a bit on the technical aspect in terms of of, of the items related to the tax increment district. And I'll start with maybe like the first one. One of the questions that always comes up is the constitutional debt. And that's, thus why the city needs the help of the county is to pass that through as a conduit. Um, I've listed out here in the TIF plan on the constitutional debt side, uh, there's a tremendous amount available, three hundred and eighty-four million. I, I, I think if you even come close to getting to that, uh, there might be some unemployment in mind, because that, that's just a number that would never be feasible. So we look at it from there saying, hey, we're good on that basis. Much like the last time, what we're doing is we've incorporated the accrued interest cost at roughly three point some percent, so it comes up total, total. Uh, the request is for that ten point three million dollar TIF, which will then flow similar to the ones that we did with the, the B-one development with the Bradskis, where it flows from the county to the city, then to the developer, because the city is, is the actual applicant on that. I know, Madam Chair, you're one to really look through the numbers, so I wanted to really point out where we separated what we see this money going towards. And it's really to create the Liberty Plaza in terms of starting out with, I don't know, um, a deployment center, the Liberty Plaza Center, and I'll have Hanny talk at all more on um the, the development being as the Dream Design Lead Designer, Lead uh Developer on there. But as you'll see, what the request to get to that ten point three million is we had some environmental cleanup, we had some grading, um, road utilities, landscaping, public building. I know the governor last week denounced the, her commitment uh from the state to that, and that's again where this public-private partnership starts to come in.
So Toby, on the two hundred thousand in environmental cleanup, what's the environmental cleanup? Is the land, there's a gas station, or is there something around that was on that land before, or what's the cleanup for?
Uh, that number came to me from the engineer's estimate of what they're at. Maybe what I'll do is I can let Hanny answer that specifically, because I know he's
Morning, Hanny.
Probably been on the site majority of the time, and maybe what we'll do, Madam Chair, if we just take
Take it back.
Back and forth and
Thank you, sir.
Turn it over to Hanny.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Hanny Shaffey with Dream Design, co-applicant with the city on this TIF. Uh, the environmental cleanup is actually for some piping or some foundations of exist, of old uh houses that were, uh, base housing that existed on the site previously.
Pipe, cast iron?
Pipes and foundations and stuff like that.
And how about, Hanny, on the public building? Out of that certain amount, you only put two million in there?
Two, two million of the infrastructure, of the uh TIF will be going towards the building. Uh, the rest of the money is going towards public infrastructure to some of it to accommodate the building, and some of it to accommodate the rest of the, like ma- mass grading. The site is in need of a lot of grading and uh pipes and what have you, and rose to really build that building and build the center piece, which is the ceremonial piece, which is a circle in the middle of the uh site to really house or to uh perform some of the ceremonies relating to de- deployment and welcoming home some of the ermine and women.
Basically, it's going to be more public and not so much of, you know, getting money out of a increment, trying to, on a public building for just ceremonies and public use.
Yes.
Which makes sense. And then how about um maybe Toby, or if you want to answer it, to financing expenses, do we usually put in, put in interest costs?
I did. Uh, three point six-two percent, and so
Yeah, the two million, nine ninety-eight, seventy-one?
Correct.
Do we usually put the, that in there?
Um, yes, we started it with the one last year where is an amount that never exceeds, because what you sometimes find is accrued interest where you may pass a TIF for ten. Next year, Cindy says, wait a minute, it's up to eleven, and it's up to twelve, so this is what I always say, a dollar in, a dollar out. You will never pay more than that ten point three million, or at the end of twenty years, whichever one comes first.
Okay, I remember now. Sorry, Toby. Thank you.
Good question.
Okay, thanks, Andy. Any questions so far?
What was that interest rate you said?
I, three point six-two percent. Um, and, and the way I derive that really goes based in the, the projections, because the TIF is only as good as what the revenue is. And so looking at what his projections are, looking at what the costs were, and bringing the two together, it said this TIF maximum can only be about uh ten point three million dollars. And so when I break out that interest rate associated over time, you'll never pay more than that imputed interest to get to that total ten point three.
I respect that number, because I think I've, I've seen in the past where we've done, set it at six, nine, and then come back and do refinancing and so forth. I think you're getting a good rate and you're planning accordingly to, or to get this financed and paid off in a timely manner.
Exactly.
Lot of that. I mean, to, to refinance later on, it'd have to be at least one point nine or two to, to save some good money on it. So I think, I think they, they got a good, good rate.
Um, I've seen this, uh, Mayor Larson went through this, and when I saw what they were going to do, and he explained it, um, I think it's amazing. Um, why I say that is if you're a business person, any kind of business person, number one, um Box Elder um has improved and done some really awesome things for their city. We partner with our cities here in our Pennington County. We want our cities to be bigger and better, meaning um in any sense of that word, and serve the people that are in their city as best as possible that they can. Um, for this, it, it, it services all people. You're not thinking, you have some low income in there, you have some public area for people. It's just, when I saw it, I was like, wow. And that's the first thing I asked, is okay, you're moving some of those people out that have homes and stuff, what are you going to do with them? Because people do that all the time, and then they forget that, you know, we, we, we in our cities are here to serve everybody. And Hanny, you have done that well, by the way. Um, so when I saw this, the main thing is to look at the numbers, so I'm not just approving it because I saw the picture. People know I look at the numbers. I'm approving it because, again, we are team, uh, Pennington County, I believe, if I could speak for all of us. And all of us in these last few years have just been working with our cities to see what we can do to help improve basically their um financial levels and to see what we can do um to represent, so. Um, this is one of those things in Box Elder and uh the surrounding western South Dakota that we can be really proud of in Box Elder. Um, I'm just going to keep saying this. You guys are starting to kick some major butt, so, um, I'm going to say butt on TV. But I'm just so proud of you. You've moved yourself, and Nicole, you've been part of that. In fact, you are the finance officer, so. And you already know I look at the numbers to make sure you're doing your things. Not always the sweetest on some of this, but um I'm just very proud of your team, your council, your mayor, and you, and what you guys have done, and Toby, you've been a part of that, and now Hanny, um, you have been improving every city in Rapid City, or the western South Dakota. You've just done some amazing things. So I'm going to put my heartfelt in there, but if you love Rapid City and you love South Dakota, and you have people like you guys moving forward for us, um, it's pretty amazing to watch. It is, it's just, if, if you like moving forward and you like business and you like taking care of your people, um, Box Elder's doing that, and and everybody I've talked about, Hanny and Toby, you've been a part of all this to make things done right, because you already know I beat you up a little bit. So um, it's great, and Ellsworth Authority, they're doing some of this with them, so um, you, you couldn't have picked a better project to help a city and help a county. That's all I got to say, sorry.
Madam Chair. You know, some people, they look at a TIF like, there's the county uh doing another loan, and they need to understand that a TIF is not a loan. We're not, the county is not loaning anybody, anything. We're just acting as a corridor uh for those funds to, to happen. I assume there's a private lender out there somewhere, Hanny?
Yes, sir. Good point, Commissioner. There's no liability on the county whatsoever.
That's just what I wanted to stress, because some, some people think, you know, that there is, but we're not, uh, we're not financially scrapped at all uh supporting this resolution.
Well, and once I put that infrastructure in there too, if Hanny fails or something fails on it, they have the infrastructure, so Box Elder can still use that to build and make that increment, make that money to still be successful. Yes, I ask, Hanny, just in case.
Fairly, there's not enough.
Not that I'm looking to you for your fail after I said the nice things, but I, I always look at the opposite side. So that infrastructure's in there. When you have infrastructure built into something, you know you just save millions of dollars worth of cost, so um, trying not to beat you up on that, but it makes a huge difference.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner, just.
I just, I just want to add to that, that uh, you know, watching what the city of Box Elder has been doing the last few years now, uh, moving forward with projects like this, having a, a proven developer like Hanny relative to this project, um, I, I'm glad that we can be a part of it and assist in being able to make something like this move forward, so I want to thank you all.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
Ditto, Gary. I got one question, and, and the partnership is great, but I was, and I mean, meant to bring my paperwork, Hanny, to receive. The economic uh impact of this development, could you give us a little bit about that?
Yes, sir. Uh, you know, this currently, the property was owned by Ellsworth Authority, which was taxed at zero. At the completion of this project, we will have about a little over a hundred million dollars in value, which will generate approximately one and a half to two million dollars in real estate taxes. The construction uh impact of this, you know, based on the second or a third-party study that was commissioned by the economic development in western South Dakota, every construction dollar generates about one point seven dollars of economic impact. If you look at a hundred million dollars of construction, there is actually one point seven times a hundred million, which is a hundred and seventy million dollars in economic impact just during the construction phase. And then later on, I talked about the uh, uh, the real estate generated from the property. And of course, majority of this, which is approximately four hundred thousand square feet of mixed-use facilities, they will have uh sales tax generated within that area too. Sales tax from companies that really do not exist in that area currently. We have already signed some letters of intent with actually out-of-state people that are moving into that area. So I hope that answered the question.
It, it does, Hanny. I, I think I, I wanted to share that with the public and get that out there, the economic impact of, and the partnership of uh, city, state, and county all in this, and developer, I mean, that, that's a pretty good uh mix of, of people, a great mix of people, and, but the impact it's going to have in the upcoming years as far as the rest of the community and the county, I think that it's a great worthwhile need to be noted.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Roskine.
Toby, I don't have all the information here, but wasn't it like, uh, you projected fifteen years for this to pay itself off?
It, it really came out to about seventeen, but I, I'm very conservative with my projections, um, as you've seen in the past. I, I could see this one probably getting paid off much sooner, just um the COVID, the Ellsworth, it's
Well, she's conservative, uh, Hanny, when you
Synergy going on out there.
I'm teasing you, Hanny. Sorry to interrupt you, sir.
No, I'm making a motion to prove.
Okay, motion one is to move to approve the resolution creating tax increment financing district number five, county pursuant. Made by, motion made by Roskine, second by Drews. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Motion two would be moved to approve the resolution for project plan for tax increment financing district number five, county of Pennington.
I saw a move.
Moved by Drews.
Second.
Second by Roskine. Any discussion? Colin, you got something, or you just?
Uh, Madam Chair, Colin McNeese, State's Attorney's Office. I just wanted to uh point out in the contract, which would be the last one.
Yes.
On page six, section eighteen, I made an error. I forgot to put arises, so in the last sentence, if a conflict arises between the provisions, so I just wanted to let you guys know that uh that would be the one change to the contract. Other than that, everything else is the same.
Thank you, Colin. I appreciate it, sir. So a motion is second. Any other discussion on um second motion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next is motion number three, move to approve the resolution contract for private development tax increment financing district number five, county of Pennington. Do we have a motion?
Move, prove.
Moved by LaCroy.
Second.
Second by Roskinex. Do we have any other discussion on item three? Motion three. Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. I'm excited to see that start going up. I'm gonna come visit Box Elder more. Thank you. Item I, please. Thank you, Brittany. Computer's kinda moving a little slow. I apologize.
It is afternoon.
Is that a hint? Item I is layout plan LPL twenty dash forty-one to create track seventeen R and seventy R of Rushmore Ranch Estates. The applicant requested this layout plan in order to reconfigure interior lot lines to create lots seventeen R and seventy R of Rushmore Ranch. Currently with these two lots, um, track seventy-eight is accessed through a easement. Um, the, this request for the layout plan to, is to actually plot out uh, like basically a flagpole lot. Instead of having the easement for access. Um, as the properties sit today, um, track seventeen does have a single family residence on the lot. Track seventy-eight is vacant of any structures. This, these properties are located within the planned unit development of Rushmore Ranch Estates. Um, staff finds no significant issues with this request and staff is recommending approval of this layout plan. So a motion, moved by LaCroy.
Second.
Second by Drews. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Your group, Cory. Thank you, Cory. Next is my, item J, please.
Okay, item J is a layout plan LPL twenty dash thirty-eight to subdivide and create lot three RA and three RB of block two of Deadbrook subdivision. The applicant Randy Sogi is requesting this layout plan um, to create an extra, another lot um, off of his lot in the Deadbrook subdivision. Um, as the property sits today, it is own low density residential district and it consists of eight point six three acres. The access is off of Deadbrook and Deadbrook is within a road district. Um, the proposed lots, one lot would be five point eight three acres and one lot would be three acres. Both of those lots would meet the minimum requirements for a low density residential district. So no rezoning is required. There is special flood hazard area on this property, but most of the special flood hazard area is on the existing three RA, which is already developed property. There is a small portion of lot three RB that has special flood hazard area, but it shouldn't impact the amount of area that could be developed. Um, staff does not find any significant issues with this layout plan request and is recommending approval.
Have a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Moved by Drews.
Okay.
Second by LaCroy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item K.
Okay, item K is another layout plan, LPL twenty dash forty, to reconfigure lot lines to create lots one and two of Russell subdivision. The applicant, Mr. Russell, has requested this layout plan to consolidate five lots into two lots. Um, as the property sits today, there are four lots um, that run along highway forty-four that are entirely within the floodway. Um, they are going to consolidate those lots to make the two lots. There will be single family residences on each of those lots. Um, one of the lots does have a small guest cottage, um, but in speaking with Department of Equalization, it's not really habitable structure and it will be converted to storage. Um, this was right around through the inner department review process. Um, there were no item of concerns that came about except for one from highway department. And they would like the existing approach to be used for both of the lots. So they would like a shared approach to these properties. Um, as I said before, staff does not find any um, problems with this request and is recommending approval of this layout.
To approve.
Moved by Roskinex.
Uh, second for discussion.
Drews, first discussion.
Uh, so was that put in? I didn't see it in there. Was that put into one of the recommendations on the shared approach?
Um, actually, as part of the recommendations from the planning commission, the planning commission did add that as a um, recommendation. So they have fifteen. The planning commission recommended fifteen um, conditions on this one.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Items from chair or commission members? Number one, Merry Christmas. And we won't have another meeting till New Year or after New Year, will we? So happy, gonna be twenty twenty-one. So seems bare without DeSanto at the end.
We got swearing in at the first meeting in January.
Yep, swearing in. You, Travis. Yep. Anybody have anything that they need to discuss besides that before we go on to twenty-one? A? No? Commissioner Roskin, please.
Uh, Commissioners, due, due, due to the continued changes and revisions relative to the county planning process and procedures. I'm requesting the board set up a special commission meeting date for informal work sessions. I propose scheduling these sessions twice a year, one in January as a year in review and the other in July to review the laws passed by the legislature. These working sessions will allow us to work with the planning and legal staff to stay up to date with the most current information. And we'll have to select what dates will work for us uh, in January, hopefully this January and then uh, sometime in July.
I think we can move to schedule informational work sessions twice a year is what I would do. And then when Travis comes on.
Sure.
Well, in January and July. And then when Travis comes on, we schedule the dates.
So we'll just leave it at twice a year for now.
Twice a year in January and July.
In July.
You good with that? Settle case with the board.
When I look at this, I, I, I kinda like, you kinda explained what this is. This is for planning department changes and laws, regulations.
We can sit in a controlled environment instead of making some decisions here that are legally binding. We can, we can actually have work sessions where we can better understand, you know, the prong one, prong two and.
Yeah, but as I was saying, um, when I looked at this, I like to have an agenda. Before I make actual, I mean, we can set the dates, but I wanna make sure it's, it's worthwhile. You know, this last one we went through. I think we went through quite a bit of stuff, but I think we kinda, it needed to be structured a little bit better. Uh, so that's, I'm just looking for timing wise and how long, what it, what it's gonna entail. But just to leave it wide open, I'm a little.
I think uh, the last one, we, I don't think we ever had it. It's gonna be in September and Holly had a pretty detailed agenda. We just never had the work session. So um, I would assume that.
But we were just reading out the books.
Yeah, we, we, it's gotta be more.
I mean, that's what I, that's what I struggle with. I mean, if we were just reading over the books, like going, reading back over. I was really enthralled. I wanted to learn more about the section lines and, and the structure of that type of stuff, Ron. Because quite frankly, you know, I'm not as detailed as the planning department is, some of you guys have worked with. So I mean, the refresher part of that somehow a little bit better. Cause I mean, I mean, I remember you saying that many times throughout the year about we need a class on section lines. And then it was kinda, just kinda went through it.
I'll be, I'll be more unhappy to put that course on.
And all um.
Uh, but the variances, I think that's what we need to kinda dial in.
Okay, so maybe what we do is, we can schedule them and then, but we need in January. But just what changes, we can meet, or I can do it if you want, meet with them and we set up agenda and not put ten things on item, on the agenda. Put like three specific, like board of adjustments been driving us all nuts. Just a few things that would, would, we could discuss. So if you want me to do that with Ross, Ross, Ron, Commissioner Roskinex, sorry, sir.
I think, I think that'd be good. And I don't think we need to isolate it to planning. Uh, because it may, it certainly may involve other departments, especially as we look at after, after July. Uh, what laws may be going into effect and so forth. It may affect uh, other departments. So.
And maybe we don't put a date on it. We just move to schedule informational work session meetings. And do we have to do that as a agenda item? Probably not. But maybe whoever's the chair or vice chair on the next thing, then we end up um, saying we're having work session next month. Because we have six changes and we wanna go through at least three of those.
Cause I'll just give you a little bit notice right now. We've got a lot of pro, my work's got a lot of projects out of town, starting at the first of the year.
Yeah.
So it's gonna be a struggle to get something in progress.
So maybe we can figure it out on what dates and what times or whatever. Plus we have a new commissioner coming in, so he can be trained with us. He was on the planning commission, which is good. And that'll be nice. And then what's nice is we have a planning commissioner that actually was in Kara's bot, which I think is gonna be an asset, which is Ms. Karen McGregor. Um, knowing some of that stuff. So um, we might wanna have planning department or planning, when we're going through this. Having some of the planning commissioners, if they wanna come to um, learn some of those new rules and regulations, unless they just wanna do them separate. Because they have to work with those just as much as us and they do it in full fold, even bigger than what we do in some of their stuff. So. It would be nice on conditional use permits and different stuff, um, the changes and anyway, good idea. Ron, we just need to refine you more. Is that what you're saying, Lloyd? Cause I agree.
Yeah, that's all.
Okay.
And it, there, could just be a chance where we can sit there and ask questions, you know, relative to, you know, areas that we have problems with when making these decisions. That might, you know, reading it out of textbook, I'm not, I'm with you, Lloyd, that I can do that anywhere.
Yeah.
We can brainstorm and then um.
Maybe do it half evening, half, instead of, or in the morning.
Yeah.
You know, let's take up some of our nightlife.
Tuesdays are usually good for us anyway, cause most of us got marked off. And we have those opposite Tuesdays that work really good, at least for me anyway. Because I, I don't schedule. Anyway, um, food for thought and then we can move forward and then on planning. I like planning stuff. So maybe I could work with them and figure out where our issues are the most. So. For us. So, no motion?
I don't think we need a motion on it. We just plan on doing it.
Yep. All right. So we're on Mark DeSantos, not here. So we're on Roskinex, building committee and planning commission.
Uh, when I got to the building committee, I, they were just wrapping up. So really nothing to report.
Thank you.
No other meetings per se.
Okay, anything on planning? Commission, planning commission?
Oh. Well, everything went pretty good.
Thank you. How about Mr. Drews?
I don't have my notes.
Um, I'm, I'm listed for building committee. I wasn't at it at all. Um, city, county uh, meeting, I, we postponed that for, I believe, at least a, a month. A couple of other things that I was involved with was the uh, we had our um, Board of Commissioners Association uh, meeting this past week. Um, that was held in peer. Uh, we went over uh, updating the bylaws for the association. They haven't been done for a long time. So we're spending considerable time getting those updated. We also went over some of the legislation that we will be uh, supporting uh, during the legislative session this year. That will include again that uh, the bill that was in last year, I haven't seen the actual final form this year, if it's gonna be exactly the same or not. But it involved that half cent uh, sales tax for counties uh, for infrastructure needs. And that would be, as it was presented last year, would, would require a vote of the, of the public before that could be effective. So. Um, there, there are some that are looking for a, a means of being able to do either new jails or jail improvements throughout the, the state. And there's no means of funding for that. So that's what they're looking for on that. Um, and then I'll leave it to Lloyd for the Black Hills uh, um, county's district meeting that was held. I'm ready. That's all I got.
Good, Lloyd.
Thanks, Gary. Oops. Uh, first to report, it would be on the air quality. Board meeting that I had yesterday and really not the only they brought up was we had the seven uh, high wind warnings and that had been issued and quite frankly, it's a little difficult to do Zoom meetings on a phone. Trying to keep track of the agenda and so forth. But uh, that was one of the concerns and one of the members had asked. That uh, the agenda gets sent down a little earlier than months because it's hard to review some of the applications for some of the uh, the permits that she goes through. Uh, that, I'd leave off with that. As far as the Black Hills area county commission, it's, it's catchy.
It's, you're next.
It will be.
We're allergic to Kara.
We had that.
Sorry.
We had that last Friday and what was good is uh, Kristin is.
Chris?
Chris. I just wanna call her Kristen. I don't know why. But uh, she'd made the comment that one, our Black Hills region was one of the few that had been consistent with her meetings during this COVID deal. But then we have to kinda give real credit to Holly because she's been consistent with. And we've been keeping them here instead of moving around, cause this is the safest place. It's pending account and we can supply the deal. But uh, that's where it's at. Uh, we did express, have Mark Vargo give a, a, a presentation on his diversion programs, the juvenile, which was very good. And then he also talked a little bit about their feelings on uh, the marijuana, you know, I keep wanting to, it should be medical marijuana and twenty-three.
Recreation.
You know, so he kinda gave a little bit of talks on that. But uh, and all in all, the meeting was pretty good. I, I, I can't remember how many we had attend, but quite a few uh, through the Zoom. And we had about four, five, five or six uh, in person. And as I stated during that meeting, we're, we're shooting for an actual, a little more in-person meeting for our next uh, meeting. Cause that'll be in May, April.
Next meeting, March, March five?
March. Third time's a charm for me. So. March. So hopefully we, we can get that organized and get more in person, actually have a lunch and, and do that type of stuff like we used to. Break some bread together. That'd be nice. So with that, the only other thing I wanted to report was um, the youth council. I, I usually do that when we're up at the first part. Uh, I explained this to Gary last night and they actually had their meeting last week that we attended. I actually drug my wife to it. So she could actually see what's going on. Which was pretty enlightening because she, her attention span's pretty short. So, but.
Second. So she's like me.
But she was impressed. I mean, I was really impressed with the youth council at this meeting. And the reasons why is number one, is being able to explain to, see from an outsider's eyes what's going on. She was shocked with how each member checked in on the, on the council. They did a check in, how are you doing? What's been going on in your life? Da 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 da, which was very good. But one of the most serious things that they had talked about was they had the mask coverings uh, mandate on their agenda. And the discussion, that was probably the most serious discussion this council, youth councils had in a long time. I mean, as far as having differences in numbers and what each thought and difference of opinions. And you gotta remember, these youth, and I forgot to mention this last night, they're mandated to wear masks at school. So it, it was kinda, that was one of the sidekicks when, during the discussions, but they had great discussion. They were, they weren't all agreeable. And quite frankly, at the end of the meeting, they all thanked each other for their different opinions. But I, I would say there was probably out of the twelve kids, youth people there, there was probably five against that, you know, mask mandates, the discussion on it and others for it. But the, the discussion they had was open and, and, and great. And probably a big movement for them. So I just wanted to pass that on that, that they're, they are growing and that was a pretty good discussion for them. And they did talk quite a bit. I forgot Gary to tell you about this, uh, the suicide. You know, they're bringing up a lot of that and how to find ways to deal with mental health and some other stuff. But that hasn't gone to the wayside. That youth council is, I think that's probably been mentioned in the last two or three meetings. Of things that they wanna do with or need to do about it. So.
Nice. Thank you, Lloyd. So number one, we went to the Pennington County Board, uh, Housing Board a couple of times. And they're picking a new director and I think they should be announcing that tomorrow. Um, building committee, I'm building committee, yes, I mean, um, city, county ended up um, sick that morning. And then Gary had already been canceled because he had other previous engagements. So we would just reschedule it for next month. So we would just reschedule it for next month. Wish to Merry Christmas to the city and, um, Happy New Year. And then, uh, fire service board, because Pennington County Housing, uh, went over that night, we actually went till almost quarter after seven, seven-thirty. I missed the fire service board, so, but they are having a recognition. Um, I did check in on the thirtieth and I'll figure out the time, but I'll send it to y'all. And, uh, those are awards for our cyber, fire service board. So we usually go and they're gonna do it by Zoom this year, um, seeing if the sheriff will say a few words and, um, Gail and, and Drum and those guys will, and they'll give their rewards to people, so, um, for their service in our, uh, volunteer fire department. So that's gonna be pretty exciting. They worked their butt off this year, so. Anyway, um, I'm, I'm thankful for the fire service board. That's four hundred and fifty volunteers and, uh, they do a tremendous service, uh, for our area in Pennington County and Western South Dakota. They're just, a- and you guys are, you know, I talk about the Salt Time team. Those fire service board members are team, um, like you wouldn't believe when they help each other in different counties as well, so I appreciate them a lot. All right, um, anything else we miss, board? We had Commissioner Roskinex last day today. We did have his recognition.
You're gonna get rid of Ron there.
I said your name again, I'm sorry. I, I don't, Ross, this Commissioner Ross, Jesus. Mark, this is, can you leave now because I, I want Mark back? I don't know why I got that on the brain there, it's so weird. You both look the same, not. Um, anyways, you know, it, it's, it's been a good four years. Um, he's been a good commissioner and it's just crazy. Um, it's nice to have, uh, change as well, but, um, he's had some good input for us and like I said, this board has just been a, a really good board, so. Um, we moved Pennington County ahead in a lot of things. And I just keep saying that over and over again. I've been in politics a long time and with our employees, our staff, our department heads, our managers and, um, with Joan and Holly, I've never been on such a great team. And I've been in the city and I've been in different boards around our city and different county things and even on state boards. So, um, it's pretty amazing and, and if, if you haven't been and Gary's been and Lloyd's been in politics a long time, to see what we, we can do when, when everybody, we, we don't have to agree with each other on everything. We don't have to do what, what our department heads and employees want all the time, but let's find solutions and it's trying to figure it out and this board has done that. So it's pretty cool to watch and I don't know if we ever thank you enough, Kara. But thank you for what I do, cause you have to sit through our meetings. Anyway, thank you as well, Ms. Kara and your team, so. Enough of that. Um, sentimental, anyway. Next is approval.
That was a good check in.
Approval of the vouchers.
Make a motion to approve the voucher in the amount of seventeen hundred dollars to Lloyd LaCroy. Second.
Um, I'll, moved by Drews, second by Roskinect. Um, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Mr. Drews?
Did show that, uh, Mr. Commissioner LaCroy abstained from that vote.
And then you'll do the next one?
I'll make a, uh, I'm looking for a motion to approve the voucher in the amount of eight hundred dollars to the Rose Inn LLC with Commissioner Hadcock abstaining.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Commissioner Ross Connect and second by Commissioner LaCroy to approve. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, motion approved with Debbie Hadcock abstaining.
Thank you. And the last motion moved to approve the remaining vouchers in the amount of three million eight eleven five eighty-six thirteen. So move. Moved by LaCroy, second by Drews. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Items from the public. You're public, Travis. You want to publicly speak for your last time before you become a commissioner?
Oh, you're not yet.
You're not yet. Next would be the executive session for SDCL's one de- one dash twenty-five dash two personnel issue.
Go move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Moved by Drews to come back to executive session.
Second.
Second by LaCroy, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Sandy Sartland, the Chair Generalist for Human Resources. Um, our first motion, um, is to approve placement of a custodian at the DBM rating A twelve on step thirteen for fifteen fifty-three an hour with the new Gallagher wage scale effective December twenty-eighth. His employment start date and his name is Rodney Sparks.
Move for approval.
Motion by LaCroy, second by Drews. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Okay, and the second one, I move to grant an exception to the policy approved on November seventeenth, twenty twenty and grant fire administrator Jerome Harvey an annual pay step on the current county pay scale effective December thirteenth, placing him at grade twenty-one, step nineteen for a bi-weekly pay rate of three thousand five dollars and sixty cents.
It's been a motion.
Go move.
By Drews. Second by.